I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Farver School Committee for Monday, May 12th. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Dais.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Ms. Larvee.
Here.
Ms. Pereira. Mayor Coogan.
Here. Let's salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person who make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium, attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. First up, Keith Michon, East Providence.
All right, I'm Keith Michon, President of the Farver Educators Association, and today I testified before the Joint Committee on Education in support of House Bill 678 and Senate Bill 338, an act to fix the Chapter 70 inflation adjustment. I spoke along with many students, parents, educators, school committee members, and other elected officials, all whom spoke in support of addressing the Chapter 70 formula to address the inflation glitch. It's estimated that without the inflation cap, the budget you are voting on tonight would be about $6 million greater. That wouldn't solve all of our problems, but it would certainly help grapple, especially as we grapple with the uncertainty of federal funding. I hope you will support this bill along with the other bills on the agenda tonight. This year, Mr. Dais was appointed by the committee to be the liaison to the legislature. This is a step that I'm glad to see the committee take. After attending a few advocacy days at the State House and today participating remotely, I was thoroughly impressed with the communities that advocated together. Today, multiple communities had a combination of their mayor, school committee members, parents, students, and educators advocating for these bills. We can't sit around and wait for the state to tell us what to do and take what they give. Together, we have the capacity to lead and advocate for what our community needs. With that, I'd like to take the opportunity to promote a forum on graduation readiness. In a couple of weekends, on May 24th at 12:00 PM, a group of us are meeting at Keith Middle School in New Bedford to discuss the graduation requirements coming out of the Yes On Two victory. This is a child-friendly, multilingual space open to the community. Check out our FREA page for details, Facebook page for details, and I hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. We have no recognition awards tonight, and our student delegates are probably wrapping up the end of the year. Citizens input, obviously that was Keith. Next up is a letter, a couple of letters we have here. Gabriel Amaral, Fall River Transportation.
Good afternoon. My name is Gabriel Boomer Amaral. I'm writing as a taxpayer, a father of six with five children in five different schools, four of which are within the Fall River Public School System. I am a community advocate, and I am very concerned about the proposed changes to the transportation policy. If this transportation policy is approved by the school committee, we all know less kids will be eligible for transportation and how that works out for attendance issues. Disadvantaged parents who do not have their own transportation will not be able to drive their kids to school. This policy would lead to more children walking to school. This is not the '70s or the '80s where we had local schools and the biggest threats of gang violence were the Jets and the Sharks. Fall River is not a safe city despite what Chairman Coogan says. There are stabbing, shooting, drug dealings every single day. The month of April alone had 299 car accidents. Now let's put more kids on the streets and see how many get hurt or killed by the unsafe drivers that have gone, that have also grown exponentially since the times of some of those voting. Children are going to be harmed from this. Did we also factor in climate weather? Did we factor in days with excessive heat or cold weather? Does the superintendent care about the students in this district? This district has a tendency of placing children in harm's way. Why would the district take this position? I believe the mayor's office, Chairman Coogan, should look for cuts in his own budget. That is now over half a million dollars just on the city side. No cuts to education. Our teachers go without while. We fluff up administration jobs, and once again, we let the teachers, kids, and the taxpayers struggle. Transportation needs to be reformed, but not in a way that harms children. I believe there is already an effort made by a school committee member to address the unfunded mandates from transportation and to bring in money to the city to help with transportation costs. This money that should go right back to the taxpayers. We know the city probably won't use the money to help the taxpayers anyway, but it's there to do so. Let's see what the unfunded mandate petition brings us. When did the administration plan to collect parent input on this proposed policy? The other week when transportation changes were discussed, school committee member Dais asked the superintendent what was being planned. The superintendent said she wasn't prepared to say. I think the superintendent didn't want to tell us, or she is waiting for her orders from above. Either way, I hope the school committee votes to protect the children. Bottom line is, not one of these members voting to endanger our children and create a harder path to an already failing education system. Have children in the systems they pretend to know about. Not one of the sitting members has raised a child in the school systems of today, and I don't believe some have in the last three to five decades. How can you tell us parents what's best for our children when you raise not a single one in the system you've created or at all?
Thank you, Deb. Next up, Jeffrey Gudrow, Palmer Street, Fall River.
Hello, members of the school committee. I am writing today to submit testimony on my thoughts and opinions on the proposed transportation policy. I wish to stop my testimony with poverty language to the school, to the song, "Another Brick on the Wall." We don't need cuts to transportation. We don't need no mayor control. Attendance will drop in the classroom. Tracy, leave transportation alone. Hey, Tracy, leave them kids alone. Thank you for listening to my song. Now, on a serious note, this transportation policy is simple. It means less students will be eligible for transportation. Can somebody tell the public how this policy will benefit students? And please do not say we're looking out for the taxpayers, because if we were, we wouldn't be wasting money on $6,000 dinosaur costumes, paying for items such as SROs, which the city should be paying for, or the waste that is in facilities and operations. This policy will mean more children will be walking in our unsafe city. More children will be walking in sweatering heat, frigid cold. This is New England, for crying out loud. With this policy, less students will be going to school. Do we think about parents who do not have their own vehicle? How about the Tvidin sleeve for Fall River? I will end this. The public knows that they're not happy for what is happening in the school system and the city itself, and I hope more parents and guardians are going to pay very close attention to this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Deb, finally. Kevin Aguirre, Crestwood Street.
Dear Superintendent Curly and school committee, I would like to bring an important matter to the committee's attention once again. It has come to my attention that a former school resource officer had allegedly that former administrators at Durfee High School covered up sexually inappropriate situations with students, as discussed publicly with high-ranking members of the Fall River Police Department. I previously shared additional details with Superintendent Curly and the entire committee. I am now formally requesting that an independent investigation be initiated to ensure that all matters involving sexual harassment, both past and present, are handled appropriately and transparently. These allegations are serious and warrant thorough examination. As outlined in Policy KE of the School Department Policy Manual, complaints involving school personnel must be investigated fully and fairly. Additionally, Policy GBEB mandates that all personnel support and enforce committee policies, prioritize student safety, and uphold the school system's legal responsibilities. I urge the committee to take swift action to guarantee accountability and uphold the integrity of our schools. Thank you. Kevin Aguirre.
Mr. Aguirre is obviously a mandated reporter, so I know he did report this to the appropriate authorities in the police department and DCF. I know he doesn't want to jeopardize anything in his future, so I'm assuming he did that, and we'll look for the follow-up report, because we are all mandated reporters.
Mr. Chairman.
Next, Mr. Aguirre.
Since you want to make this a debate, I'm happy to.
No, I wasn't making a debate. I'm applauding your efforts to report the thing.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your comments. If you would understand what a mandated reporter is, you have to have an individual person that you're reporting that on. What I'm reporting here is a statement that happened by a former school resource officer that she indicated to other high-ranking police officers that something inappropriate was being covered up at Durfee High School. I received that information. That's not a specific case, so you can try to divert the attention away from the real issue all you want, but the issue here is, it should be investigated and looked into. If the comments were made by somebody that's a high-ranking police official and former SRO, it should be investigated. Has nothing to do with being a mandated reporter. Thank you.
Well, again, those comments were made to the chief, former chief of police, and I know you appreciate his efforts, so I'm assuming he was the mandated reporter that followed up right away and called people in during the investigation.
You know what, Mr. Mayor?
I'm assuming that's what you're applauding.
Here's how you handle a situation, like we're going to be talking about next, is if there's an issue, somebody raises an issue, this school committee can vote to have an independent outside person do the investigation, like you and the rest of the committee did, which we're going to be talking about. If we can spend $20,000 to investigate a situation when I called into question an illegal garage and illegal overtime being given out, if we can spend $20,000 on that to keep the protection of the workers and the students in this district, I think it's worthy of the $20,000. So let's do an outside investigation if nobody has anything to hide.
I have nothing to hide, but I do want to make people clear about what the school committee, Mr. Aguirre, is trying to do to the Fall River Public Schools. It's an absolute travesty, and it's hurtful to the parents and the students in this building. He's not talking about some nefarious thing in the wind. He's very specific. He sent this letter to the attorney, and we have copies of it from his report. It has been stated in various documents that former, current police chief Kelly Fattato in the past told multiple people in a public setting, I don't know anything about this, that Paul Coogan was covering up, now listen to this, two rapes per week while he was assistant principal at Durfee. So that's 70 rapes a week that Mr. Aguirre is alleging, 70 rapes a year, I'm sorry, 70 rapes a year that Mr. Aguirre is alleging went on in Durfee High School. It's outrageous. He's slandering all the teachers, he's slandering all the staff, and the parents, and the students. No one, no one. And when he gets his report that he wants, after he goes to the police department and makes his claims or DCF, he will find out that none of this is true. He heard this secondhand. I have the police report where it was come up. My name's not even in it, and Mr. Aguirre has decided that he's going to slander people and libel them, and I'm glad he did it in a public setting. I want this all out in the public. There were no, I want the parents to know and the children to know, there were no two rapes a week at Durfee High School. It's outrageous that he would make comments like this, and as he said, on multiple occasions. So we will do an investigation with either the state or the Fall River Police, and I know, as again, Mr. Aguirre wrote, two rapes a week, that's where he's a mandated reporter. If he knows the parents and he knows the people, he should definitely be filling this up, out with the proper authorities. We'll do whatever's necessary to keep the name of Durfee High School clean, but this is an outrageous slander, and I'm sure Mr. Aguirre will be comfortable when he's finished his mandated reporting. And I want to, I just want to say, it's disgusting to me, and I'm sorry that we're at this kind of level. It's the kind of things we go through many times on this committee, and it's making us all look bad, but for him smashing the heck out of a high school and its students and its parents, it's just another day at work. We'll get on with the agenda now. Yes?
You can keep trying to divert it. This has nothing to do with the students or anyone at Durfee High School.
Who's being raped?
Excuse me?
Who's being raped?
The person that you just named, which is the police chief, the interim police chief, stated to other members of the police department in a public setting that Mr. Coogan and the administration, and the administration was covering things up at Durfee High School. That should not be okay for you, me, or anyone here or out there. That's what I'm saying.
No, what you're saying is...
We're talking a very, very different situation here. You are trying to divert, sir.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are. So enough already, Mr. Mayor.
So you believe that there were 70 rapes at Durfee High School a year?
You know what's absurd? No, I do not. I do not believe that.
You wrote it.
I think that's absolutely absurd.
You wrote it.
It's absolutely absurd that a police SRO actually stated that to other members.
To the chief.
Yeah, and the other, and both deputy chiefs at the same time.
And he did nothing.
And all of them tried to do something, but I'm sure.
No, they did nothing.
But your investigation can let them go on. The bottom line is, if anyone's getting sexually harassed or treated, mistreated, whether it's a student or an adult, needs to be addressed, and too much of that stuff has gone on, and it's gone on long enough. So do an outside investigation, and it can't be done by the Fall River Police Department, but do an investigation, because it's not right. It is totally not right. Try and divert all you want, Mr. Mayor.
No, I'm not diverting anything.
It's not right. It's not right.
You alleged that they were covering up two rapes per week while I was the assistant principal at Durfee High School.
That's a quote?
No, it's not a quote. There's no quotes on that.
Okay.
No quotes on that, Mr. Aguirre?
Keep diverting, Mr. Mayor.
No, I'm not diverting anything. You're offended that you would accuse the students and the staff at Durfee High School of 70 rapes a year being covered up?
That's what the statement was by Ms. Fattato, the SRO.
And you believe it, so you printed it.
The school resource officer is the one who stated it.
All right.
That's what I'm talking about. Let's do the investigation and see how it plays out.
Go to the police department. This is rape you're talking about, Mr. Aguirre. Don't wash it with the...
Keep trying to divert, Mr. Mayor. You can divert all you want. Face the facts.
I'm not diverting anything.
Face the facts.
Mr. Corey.
We're done.
Mr. Corey.
Mr. Chairman, this is really the first that I'm hearing about this. I heard some whispers, but I have no idea what the details look like, except that when you were vice principal at Durfee High School, Mr. Chairman, I was one of the adjustment counselors on staff, and I worked closely with you personally on many cases that actually saved kids, helped kids, kids that were in crisis, kids that were poor. We worked, we helped so many kids, it wasn't even funny. And if I'm in the role of a school adjustment counselor, then I should be able to hear about any situations that rise to the level of rape inside the school building that I'm counseling at. And I heard absolutely nothing, sir. With that, I yield.
Ms. Larvee?
So, I'm going to be quick, but I think the issue I have with this, I, as well as Mr. Corey, I've heard nothing of this. What I am concerned with is we're using kids and rumors for pawns in a political disgusting game. So I don't want to be a part of it. I'm going to go back years and years. I've been working with kids, teenagers, for years, and I've never heard of anything. And I used to hear when kids were doing this in the bathroom and that in the bathroom. I've never heard of anything. One question I have right now is, how many years ago are we talking? I mean, you were vice principal when?
I retired in 2015.
So...
Ten years.
We're saying an SRO made a statement, there was no SRO that went to the police department. The chief of police at the time was aware of this, and there was no investigation on the police side. I'm very, very confused. So I'm going to yield. I don't know what's going on right now, but this is gross.
It is.
I yield.
Mr. Dais?
The only things I just want to say, Mr. Aguirre never directly alleged that he was quoting a statement, and I believe, Mr. Mayor, you are entitled to due process, and you are, and when something is alleged that is very serious, and it should be looked at, I don't agree it should be looked at the Fall River Police Department. It should be looked at at the outside and look, and make sure that did not happen. I'm not going to make the allegation whether that did or not, however, that should be looked at when it's said. However, I believe Attorney aside was to weigh in.
Hold on, Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, because I raised my hand. A few things. First off, I did work at Durfee High School for a short stint, for about three to four years, what you aspire as well, and I didn't hear anything. But I also think, and this is why I tapped and said Attorney aside should weigh in on this, we really have to take a look on what our protocols are and our policies on when things happen and when an allegation is made. And whether it's true or not, whether who investigates it or not, it's just a consistency piece. Now, I can go off on record and say that I worked there, I didn't hear anything, but we still have to, and obviously the mayor is due, his due process, but we still have to, you know, take every single incident to shame, right? And we have to be consistent across the board. Regardless who does the investigation, I mean, I'm just hearing of this, so, you know, it's, for me, it's a little bit concerning that, like how things are being played out, but I think Attorney aside should really weigh in on this, and like I said, if an allegation is made, what is the protocol, or what is, how do we handle things as a school committee? And Attorney aside, if you can speak on that, because obviously I know we have something coming in front of us with Mr. Aguirre, and like I said, I just want to make sure we're consistent, and I want to make sure things get resolved the best way, because I don't want to, you know, sit here and argue about this for hours.
First of all, the, I haven't seen the letter, but hearing the letter, it obviously appears that there are some issues or some allegations about criminal misconduct. If that is the case, then the obligation of anybody on this stage or anywhere else, especially a mandated reporter, has an absolute obligation to report any credible evidence of any type of a criminal event at this school with the appropriate authorities, whether that be the police, the state police, or the district attorney. The Farver School Committee is not empowered to conduct criminal investigations. We don't have any subpoena power. You can't seize records. That's the duty and responsibility of the police or other law enforcement body, including sheriff's departments as well as the DEA. So if in fact anyone has any information concerning any type of illegal act here at the Farver School Department, it should be reported immediately to the appropriate law enforcement agency.
Again, we're not going to go on. I just want to make sure that people understand, this is not two kids in the hall. This is an allegation of rape. This is a felony. This does not belong on this stage. This belongs with the proper authorities, and as Attorney aside said, that's where this should go, and I welcome, I welcome any investigation, because I know that this is just made up for someone to try to hurt people. With that, I'd like to get on with the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Aguirre?
I want to call to the, the citizen input time that I just had the clerk read. It reads, "I would like to bring an important matter to the committee's attention once again. It has come to my attention that a former school resource officer has alleged that former administrators at Durfee High School covered up sexually inappropriate situations with students, as discussed publicly with high-ranking members of the police department." Nowhere in there, at this citizen input time, did I indicate the individuals' names. You chose to do that based on an email that I sent to the committee. The intent of that email that I sent to the entire committee several weeks ago was to ask to put this on an agenda so that we can address it like we typically would in executive session related to any of these comments. You chose to bring out the people's names. You chose to keep trying to talk about whether it's two rapes or 70 rapes. Nobody's accusing anybody of that. But on the record here, in my citizen input time, it states, once again, that there was sexually inappropriate situations with students, as discussed publicly with high-ranking members of the police department. Has nothing to do with rapes. Don't try to divert it. And I'm glad that you agreed to have an investigation, so we can get by this, so it's not keep going back and forth saying, she said this, he said that. Do the investigation. I yield.
No, the investigation will be conducted by the Fall River Police Department. You made an allegation of rape. It's written right here by you. That is not sexual harassment or inappropriate stuff. That is a violent felony that you're taring the school with. And you specifically write, "Two rapes per week."
That's what was stated by your police chief.
My position is, my position is, you should be willing to come forward with the names of those 70 people and their children and bring some fresh air to this. This is writing a letter, and then giving a letter like that is just so, so sad that you demean the whole city of Fall River. It's sad.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I did put the names in. The names are listed, right there.
No, the 70.
Police chief Kelly Fattato, when she was a school resource officer, went to former chief Paul Garvin, deputy chief Barden Castro, deputy chief JT Hoar, in a public setting. That young lady at the time was bad-mouthing you, sir, as the administrator at the high school. She used that word to say, "Two rapes a day, week," or some kind of nonsense absurdity to those individuals. That's what this is all about. This isn't about not saying who it was and the people. I do not know any of the individuals, but there was situations that shouldn't have happened, I'm sure. We're going to get to the bottom of it. But those are the four names I know. You don't need to do an investigation. I just told you who it was.
Yeah.
Kelly Fattato told Paul Garvin, Barden Castro, and JT Hoar that you and other people at the high school were covering up rapes at Durfee High School. Period. I got no other information to add.
Mr. Aguirre, I have Mr. Garvin's notes right here. I'm not even mentioned in anywhere in that report. My name is not here. And this is from Paul Garvin, so you dragged me into this for some reason that you think is funny. I have Kelly's statement right here. She was making a joke about locked bathrooms. My point is, Garvin, Hoar, none of them took it serious enough to say, "We got to get to the high school. We got to help those kids. Let's start an investigation." So you can tar and feather the whole police department and the whole school system to try to make a point. My position is, this never went on, it never happened. The only one writing about it is you now.
We'll see what your investigation is.
His comments were from 2018, Mr. Aguirre, and those were Mr. Garvin's comments. My name is not in them anywhere.
I'm glad you're going to do the investigation.
No.
I would encourage you to do it outside of Fall River.
As a mandated reporter, I'm sure you'll be filing. Let's get on with the agenda. Subcommittee updates. I got to apologize, people, but I am not going to let people rip this school to shreds to hell with them. I got to get back to work. The Parent and Community Outreach Meeting, conducted by Chairman Dais.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, before I begin, there were two items that were referred to from the Subcommittee, three to nothing.
They'll be on the next agenda. They were supposed to be on this one.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to my Subcommittee Report. The Parent and Community Outreach Subcommittee held a meeting on May 5th at FOSCA with all members present. The committee met with the administration, Mr. Michon of the FREA, the Fall River Scholarship Association, and the PACE Center. We were able to discuss eight items in just two hours with meaningful discussions and referrals to this committee. Overall, believe it was a good Subcommittee meeting with great participation from our membership and the invitees. Discussions were based around many topics. We had a discussion with the FREA president around input at meetings from staff within this district. The conversation shifted to a discussion around exchanges at school committee meetings and allowing for more dialogue with the public. The Subcommittee voted to refer the full committee a review of the citizens' input policy, and hopefully it'll be on the agenda for next meeting. We also spoke with the Miss Fall River Scholarship Association and discussed her initiative of working with children in the classroom and how that program can be extended to other schools in the district. The mayor's office finally allowed and agreed to add the school committee to the list of community events. I'd like to thank the administration for putting that on. I've noticed, I personally noticed an increase in the invites to community events, so I'll be sure to attend more in my free time. The Subcommittee also reviewed the legislative liaison policy, and one voted three-nothing to refer the previously rejected bills back to this committee for endorsement, because they helped the Fall River Public Schools. And the committee also requested discussion after this report on the logistics of what our yearly meeting with the state delegation would look like. The Subcommittee also discussed HR recruitment and community outreach. However, the HR director left as the meeting was being called up. I was not aware the director had a prior commitment until five minutes before the meeting started and was unsure of what time he had to leave. However, we did have a good discussion with the superintendent, and we refer the discussion items to the full committee around the logistics of referral bonuses, meaning anyone here that works for the Fall River Public Schools, if you refer someone to work in the district, you can get a bonus. And possible relocation report for new hires. Again, this is just looking at the logistics of this. And finally, we convened with the PACE Center and PACE On The Go bus is finally under repair after many months, and we also had discussion around enhanced citizens' input, and records[1788.83] And we also had discussion around enhanced citizens' input, and records request has, however, has been tabled pending review from Attorney Assad or other council. That is the end of my report. However, as I just stated, I'd just like to open up the floor to anyone if we can discuss logistics of our yearly meeting. That was voted unanimous by this committee to support. Does anyone wish to take the floor?
If anybody has any opinions of what they should do, you can always email Mr. Dias. Also, follow-up questions or concerns about where we should have it.
Thank you. I guess I, if I just have a question of my own, I don't know if it would be you, Mr. Chair, if you would send out the invitations as the head of the school committee, or it would be, or the superintendent as the head of the Farver Public Schools and where this would be hosted. When it comes to logistics, is it something you would be able to put together, Superintendent?
So, yeah, I mean, I think I had a question at the meeting itself, when we started to talk about this, and had just suggested that, in general, as the committee takes votes on things, whether it be, you know, a letter to be sent out on behalf of the committee or communication such as this, to invite people in or to throw out some dates, or that, I thought there should be a clear plan coming out of a vote as to who would do it. And so I don't know if that's something that would come in the form of, you know, some kind of policy, and we needed to talk about it within a policy Subcommittee, or something like that. But I just had suggested a clear plan coming out of any vote like that. In this situation, I don't think that I would be the person to invite the delegation on behalf of the committee, but if somebody, if, you know, it's one of those, if it's the will of the committee, then I would do that.
Yeah, just real quick, Mr. Bailey. I think the appropriate measure to do, and we should have this in the near term, is the chair send out a formal date and invitation, and you set up the logistics of, like, where we're going to have the meeting.
Oh, sure.
Things like that. I yield, I see other colleagues.
No, I was just going to comment on that, and, because something that I discussed too is collaborative approach in, as the committee, you know, requesting the chair to send it out, and then just having you help with the logistics. Because I think it's important, and I think as the committee, it's something we need to discuss moving forward. So, you know, at the, at the meeting, that's something that all three of us discussed that would be a great idea. So maybe, I don't know if it has to be a conversation on the agenda, or a conversation in executive session, whatever it may be, just figuring out how that goes and just getting something in the books. I yield, Mr. Dias.
You've done it, Mr. Dias?
I yield, yes.
Mr. Corey, policy?
Okay, so on Wednesday, May-
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Question on that.
Mr. Aguirre.
So I've been saying this for a long time, that the administration should be hosting meetings without the school committee, with the delegation, to talk about all things education, litigation, things like that, separate from, I think, what the vote was for us to all meet. So I think the superintendent should be able to, when she meets with her team and those folks, determine what's the best month for that. They have a busy schedule, when it might make more sense to do before. Legislation has to be filed, certainly not during budget time. But I do think that, separate from waiting for all of us to get together, the administration does need to meet with them individually to go over their needs and wants and asks sooner than later, in my opinion. Thank you, I yield.
Mr. Corey, policy, chair of the policy Subcommittee.
And so last Wednesday, May 7th, we had a Subcommittee meeting on policy. It was a short meeting. We only had two agenda items. The first item was a discussion to vote to refer a revised walkers and riders policy, which I know has been a topic of interest for the entire community. There's just new language that we were going over, and there seems to be a feeling like we're going to cheat kids, but we're not going to be. It's on tonight's agenda. When it gets there, we'll have further discussion on that particular item. The second item we discussed was a vote to refer a draft work-from-home policy. And this was basically an icebreaker moment for this particular idea. The committee decided to table the issue just so that for further discussion. As I said, it was an icebreaker issue, and it was intriguing. And we'd like to learn a little bit more before we put it on the full committee agenda. So we'll be discussing that a little further on down the road before we come up with an agenda item on that. Thank you, I yield.
Item number six. Mr. Aguirre.
So I did not see the meeting, but I have been communicating with Dr. Curly for several months now on this exact issue. The problem that I have is that we do not have a work-from-home policy, but there's been situations, mostly, I think, for the great reasons, where the superintendent has to allow for people to work from home. But there's no policy in place that allows that. And that's very dangerous, you know, arbitrary, things like that. So I think the urgency of getting a policy like this is something that is well overdue. I brought up at a meeting here that we had a person working, living in Portugal, actually getting paid like they were working in the HR department for months. We had another person that lived in Florida that was working. So those things come to the committee, we have to address them. My way of addressing it was, I talked to Dr. Curly about it, I think she's in agreement, that we need a policy, which I think that's what she put forward. So I'm not sure of why the tabling of it, but all I would encourage you is to get it done sooner than later, so we, there's strict parameters on who can and cannot. It's really not fair to have arbitrarily decide that employee can work from home, but this employee can't work from home. We need to clarify it, so. I yield, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dias.
Thank you. And just wanted to give, since it's not on the agenda, I wanted to give my comments on, on the tabling of that policy and some things that I wish to see in that policy. One, and again, I look at policies, not just for today, but going five, 10 years in the future. The policy does not address whether, if the superintendent wishes to go on this leave or from work from home. There's nothing in there. There's no parameters, whether it be the committee approve it or whatnot. So there's vague language in there that I would like to see added into there. I think we're all in agreement with that, more or less. Someone correct me if I'm wrong, but there was some disagreement with, in my, just my opinion, we should be notified when individuals are being placed on this, on this leave. On this, not leave, but what we, on this leave. So for far too long, we've, hear things, and we need to be notified as a committee when it happens. So, for example, the Portugal incident, we did not know much about that. And I think we could have had a lot, take, like, we could have had a lot clarified if the committee was just kept in a loop. And there's a big difference between looking into personnel, and the reason there's some pushback was the word personnel. And the personnel only covers if we're, hi, we're not. No one's suggesting that we hire, fire, or discipline anyone. However, we have a right to be notified as a school committee when things happen, and they can be kept in a loop, just so we can verify and oversee the superintendent that we hire. That's something that should be supported throughout the district, and I'm looking for that in a new policy, I yield.
Ms., Dr. Curly?
Yeah, I just, I do want to clarify, and I did at the Subcommittee meeting, around this idea that we were letting someone, like, work from home in Portugal. And what I explained was that this wasn't a person working for us as a, like, a full-time contracted employee, that we were letting work from home despite the fact that the person lived or moved to Portugal. That person's, that person's employment was terminated, the person resigned, but we needed work done. And so we contracted with that individual, kind of outside of a regular, like, S-Non contract or something like that. We, we paid the person to do some work in the interim until we got the position filled. And so that, that wasn't a work-from-home situation. That was just, there was somebody outside our general vicinity. Obviously, it was, you know, thousands of miles away. But there was someone outside of Fall River who could get work done that we needed done, and so we contracted with that person to get the work done. It wasn't continued employment in a work-from-home situation. I don't, I can't speak, I honestly don't know. I can't speak to the, I know there was reference to somebody in Florida. I don't know the details about that, but I knew the details about this one.
Ms. Lowden?
Yeah, I'd just like to revisit this when it comes up on the agenda, when they bring us back the policy for review.
Okay.
So we don't waste any more time. Thank you.
Mr. Dias, can we move on?
I want to quickly respond, if I may, to what the superintendent said. I don't disagree with anything you have said, Superintendent, or even with that process necessarily, as it explained. It's just more of communication with the committee. There's absolutely nothing wrong with notifying the committee. And I think transparency goes a long way with many different things. And I'll just leave it at that, I yield.
Superintendent, Mr. Corey?
So I'll be brief. As far as notifying the committee on every move you make, Madam Superintendent, I find to be unnecessary. When we appointed you Superintendent of this district, we placed our trust in your judgment to do the very best you can for our district. I trust you on that merit, and I don't need to know about every move you make. As far as I'm concerned, that sounds like micromanagement to me, I yield.
Okay. Let's go to the superintendent's report and see if we can move along a little bit. Dr. Curly, you have, the first one is the hiring update.
Sure. So we met a couple of weeks ago, so there hasn't been as much movement between meetings. But since our last meeting, we've had five new hires: a coach, a nurse, a teacher, a paraprofessional, and a security officer. During that time, we've also had 11 resignations and one retirement. And so I wanted to give an update with respect to the job fair. So generally speaking, the event was very well-attended. I mentioned to the school committee that Channel 10 was on-site to do a story, which I thought, you know, I thought that was pretty fantastic. We've already conducted some interviews with folks coming out of that. There were actually some interviews that took place on-site, kind of on-demand that day. And I believe we've had some candidates recommended for hire. So overall, we had 42 people who attended and filled out a Google form. I do think there were more than 42 people in attendance. We had 25 waiting to come in the door when we opened at 9 o'clock. But 42 people did complete an online form for us so that we could, you know, we could be in contact with them if we thought anything popped up that might be of interest and things like that. So those people, as part of that form, also expressed interest. And so I just wanted to give some numbers. People selected positions in which they might be interested, and we had two people select, like, a clerk, secretary position, five custodial, nine elementary teachers, seven said they were interested in high school teaching, eight in middle school teaching, 12 in nutrition, 15 paraprofessionals, 18 for maintenance, and eight for security. So we left that day, it was, like, a very high-energy two hours that we spent at Derfi that morning, and it was just really well-attended. And we left with, you know, feeling very positive about some of the hiring we can do coming out of an event like that. And I would just, it was much, much better attended than it has been in the past, so really good sign. The next piece is around Skills USA, and I think people probably saw online, if people follow our page, but I just wanted to say and offer congratulations very publicly to students from Derfi High School who went to compete in Skills USA. We had 43 students who went to the, who went to the conference. We had 10 people who placed, and six of those people placed first and will be going on to a national competition in Georgia, which is really exciting. There are people competing, as well as their models, I believe, for aesthetics and, and something else, for nail care. So really exciting for our, for our students. I just wanted to mention some names. Eva Pereira for cosmetology, Casey Cravalo for aesthetics, Miranda Morais for nail care, and Avery Lane for natural hair care and braiding. And then there were two models going along with them down to Georgia, so.
Give them a hand.
Exciting, yeah. Next, I wanted to be able to give a kindergarten enrollment update. Really big numbers for this time in the year. We're at 410 K registrations. We're continuing to offer the K registration on-the-go, even though the RV isn't ready. We are on location at various schools and places throughout the city. And so I would just encourage people to be on the lookout for that, attending, you know, we're going out to schools, daycares, and things like that. And the registrations are much higher than they have been in the past. And I really, I don't necessarily think it means that we're going to hit, you know, 1,000 K registrations, but I think we've gotten ahead of it. It gets better for us every year, and we're just seeing an increase in those early registrations, which is, is really good for us in terms of planning. Aligned with that, I wanted to give a dual-language update. I think the last, you know, two weeks ago, I said we had 18 registrations. We're up to 30 families who are interested now in the dual, sorry, the dual-language education. And there is another meeting for parents who might be interested on May 21st at 4:00 at Vivera. So if anybody out there is interested in learning more about the dual-language program, I would encourage you to go. I would say that, you know, we have been very focused on those K registrations, but there are opportunities for students to join the dual-language program, you know, after kindergarten, or if there are older students. We're K to four in the coming year. And so if there are students even outside of kindergarten, I think it's worth it to attend and ask some questions about whether your student could be a good fit for that program. The next piece is around end-of-year activities. So tis the season, you know, in Fall River and everywhere, in terms of award ceremonies, recognition ceremonies, step-up ceremonies and things. We have asked our school leaders to schedule these kinds of events in the, in the afternoons, because we do often see parents who want to dismiss their children from these events. And we love having parents come, parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, as many as we can support in terms of attending these events. But what we are seeing is that, you know, the whole family's there, and we want to have a big celebration, so we're going to leave and take the student out to lunch or whatever it is. Recognizing that that has happened in the past, we are asking schools to hold those events in the afternoon while simultaneously asking parents not to dismiss your children, because through the end of the school year, even those last two half-days, we are very focused on attendance and making sure students are in their seats and they're still continuing to participate in all of our activities. So I'd ask parents to attend, but not take your children with you when you leave. And I think that was my last thing. That's it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Dias?
Thank you. On the, on the RV, are we, how long do we expect for that RV to be out of commission? Because I know we purchased this in January, and we're now in May, and it's still not up and running. Do we have a timeline?
I, I think that what Ms. Kudo had reported at the meeting that we had last week was that there was, there was a part or something that had been on back order. That was the delay in getting things fixed. But I'm pretty sure, what I heard her say, was that the part was in or coming in, and we expected to have access this week. And then we just have to, it has to be wrapped. We have to wrap it in a Fall River logo. That was one of the stipulations to our taking on this donation. And so we have to get it wrapped so that we're covering up the, you know, previous organization that had ownership of it. But I don't have, I don't remember if she said on that date, and I can't recall if there's, like, a hard date where it's going to be up and running. I just know that we were waiting on repairs, and the part came in, and we were expecting, I think, this week to get, to get it back so that we could take it, to get it wrapped.
Okay. If, maybe in the Friday memo, we can get a more definitive date, just because I know there's grants involved with this as well, and I just want to make sure we don't run out on the grant that, I believe we were thinking.
Sure, because, yeah, they're paying for all those improvements.
On the hiring update, do we have a number on the, oh, I guess it'll be later in the agenda. I was going to ask the, for the resignations. On the agenda later on for resignations, is that, what, what day, what day does that fall under, when we put the resignations on the agenda or out to the committee? Is that, like, up till today or up till when we put the agenda together? I'm just, I'm just trying to get a number on how many resignations.
So you want to know if, if 10 people literally resigned in the last two weeks and they're gone? Or did they put in their resignation and they're not leaving until the end of the school year or something like that?
I was just trying to get a figure on if we, how many resignations we've had in this hiring, like, we just reported out on, on hiring. I just want to see how many resignations.
She just told us 11. 11.
I missed the resignation.
See, when she read her report, she said 11 resignations.
Thank you, I missed that part. I would love to know if either Mr. Almeida or someone could come down. When we're talking about hiring and recruiting individuals to come into this district, what would be the cost for, let's just say, $100 referral for every person we get into the Farver Public Schools or an employee does? What, was that looking for a total number?
So, I mean, right now, we had, let's say it's 130 vacancies. That was a number that has been out there. So say 130 vacancies. So if you're looking at, if each one of those vacancies was filled by a referral, just, yeah, $13,000.
13 grand.
I'd like to make a motion that the superintendent put together a plan to offer a $100 bonus for any employee that hires an individual within this district for the vacancies.
Second.
I have a second.
Question.
Mr. Agia.
Did this come up at the subcommittee?
Correct.
Was there any thought from the administration? I seconded it so we could have discussion, but I think $100 is nothing, but I do think that it is merit to such a policy. But I think, I'd like the administration to come back with a real program that's actually going to, in talking with your HR department, your Assistant Superintendent, what's really going to matter? $100 isn't necessarily going to, it's better than nothing, I guess, but I think as part of a recruitment strategy, one aspect of it. So, I do think we should do it, but I think we should do it a little more with some idea that from the people on the ground that are doing the recruitment, is it really going to matter? That's what I would like to do.
If.
I'd bring that in, I'd bring that in based on hiring. You know, you could walk five friends through for 500 bucks, but not a one of them really wants a job, but they come in as a referral. So, I would base, I would base it on if someone took a job. If Colin Dais asked Mimi Larrabee to teach English at Durfee, she came over, we might work out something for that.
That's what I was referring to. That's what I was referring to, exactly that.
Okay, okay.
If I may, if the administration, since the mayor said this would be on the agenda for the next meeting, if the administration could come back with some proposals, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. You withdrew your motion. I agree with that. Mr. Bailey?
No, I was just going to say that's something to be discussed at the subcommittee meeting. It's something we discussed as a subcommittee meeting as well. And if we could just look at some, you know, other districts and some policies that they have, because I do think it's worth it, and when we talk about recruiting, we do need to figure that out, because we're still kind of waiting on some updates on how that's going. But that's all I'd add. I yield.
Okay. Anything further? Hearing none. Item number seven is the approval of minutes. I have three sets there. I'm sorry, four ones on the other page. I have the approval from the special meeting on 3/3/25, approval of Facilities and Operations Subcommittee from 3/6/25, and the approval of the Instructional Subcommittee from 3/5/25, and the approval of the minutes from the Regular School Committee meeting on 3/10/25.
Motion to approve all.
I have a motion. I have a motion, second. Any discussion on those, what's that's the minutes? Mr. Dais.
Going to vote no on that motion, because the 3/10 minutes were in the board docs, and I'm not going to vote to approve minutes. I never looked at. So, I'll be voting no. However, just have a general question on all the minutes. Are we up to date with the open meeting law when it comes to the approval of our minutes?
Are we up to date on the minutes?
Are we up to date on our minutes?
At the next meeting, all remaining minutes will be on the next agenda.
The next agenda will contain all minutes, Mr. Dais. We'll be caught up then.
Okay. Again, I, and I expressed this to the committee, I do have a concern that with the three, and we had a lot of meetings within the month of March. I don't believe personally that we're up to date, in my own opinion. However, I'm going to urge my colleagues to vote no on the motion, because we can't approve minutes that we never looked at. I usually take the time to go through all the minutes to look at them. I did not see the 3/10 in the board docs, so I'll be voting no. I yield.
3/10, may I?
Go ahead, Ms. Irene.
3/10 is on board docs.
Did not see that on board docs.
I'm staring at it.
When was that placed on the, when was that placed? I looked at it maybe two hours before the meeting.
No, it was placed this morning.
It was placed this morning.
All right. Can we get a vote, Mr. Agia? I have a motion, a second, on approving the, Mr. Agia, on a motion.
I'm going to vote to support it, but I do think that my colleague raises a point that when we're setting agendas, please be careful. We have a system in place, Chair, Vice Chair, Attorney, Superintendent, to look at the agendas. Please do not put things on the agenda that are not ready, because it makes us look like we are just approving things that we're not looking at. This has gone on five, six times over the last six months. Please don't put things on the agenda if we're not ready to discuss them or they're not done properly. That's the point of drafts and meetings before. Thank you. I yield.
Okay. Can we get a roll call, Deb?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bailey.
No, I was just going to add, I'm going to end up voting no, and the reason why I'm going to vote no is because I did not look at the minutes, nor did I have time, and I did not attend that meeting. So, that's why I'll be voting no.
Okay.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Dais?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number eight is the approval of travel requests. It's the end of the year. We only have a couple. And I have an addendum on another one for Fonzieka to go to Roger Williams Zoo. I guess this is from Katie Cobb, the same one. So, we have three altogether: Durfee, Ken Pachico, and Fonzieka. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion, I have a motion, a second, Mr. Corey, and then, Mr. Agia.
I think Mr. Corey made a motion.
Oh, okay, Mr. Agia.
Just a quick question, not related to these, but just in general. Is attendance of the employee taken into consideration when we look at conferences, trips, or anything as a supervisor or director?
When it is, I don't know what happens at the school level.
I don't mean at this. I'm saying, generally speaking.
I would say, I would say yes. Yeah, I think that, yes.
So, if somebody's out a lot, it's just, and then they want to go on trips?
Right.
Could be stopped by the director.
Yes.
Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dais.
Is this a motion on attaching or approving?
Approving, approving the three.
Okay, so I just have one question on the bottom one, just because this is coming, this, usually these come out of grant funding and not usually out of the operating budget. Is this something that's built into the contract of the person that's going?
I do not believe, I don't, no. I don't think this
Trip.
is built in.
Okay. Can we speak a little bit, then, to the need for, not the need, but what's the purpose? What do we accomplish out of the trip?
So, my understanding is that the individual will be actually presenting at this conference as well as participating, and it's the, this is for the Director of School Safety, and this is the School Safety Advocacy Council. It's the National School Safety Conference in Exposition. So, I would defer to the backup that was provided. Sorry. Okay.
I did review the backup. It didn't really speak to the need or the purpose of it. And usually, I wouldn't, if it's, if it's usually, if it's something that's paid out of a grant, there's usually a grant to back this, and that usually explains the purpose for trips like this. I'm just trying to, I just didn't really, when I looked, reviewed this, I didn't really see what the need was. Like, what are we gaining out of the trip? I think it's a valid question.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's not valid.
Okay. If I couldn't.
When I read through it, I assumed what we're trying to obtain was increased safety. Is that correct? You can probably speak more.
So, like most opportunities for PD, which is what we would use this as, it is to increase our ability to do the best we possibly can in our buildings for safety and security. The Safety and Security Director is right here, that he would be able to give you any further information you need. I do know he's a presenter because of the conversations he had last year with most of the people who are in this organization. Quite a few former police officers are in this group, so if you have any other questions, I'm sure Mr. Ventura will be able to answer that for you.
You can just nod your head, yes. There is, you believe there's valuable experiences from going to this? Okay. That's all I need to know. I yield.
Yeah. I mean, one of the things that was in the backup is that Mr. Ventura would be participating in the Investigative Threat Assessment Process Certification Course. And it seems like that was something that, you know, would speak to me as just professional development for our Director of Safety and Security.
I'm satisfied. I yield.
Okay, thanks.
Do you want to call the roll, Deb?
Question.
Oh, Mr. Agia, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, I think it's just that, when you look at the amount, like, I'm trying to figure how much do we pay for professional development for the men and women that do the security work? And $2,300 is $2,300, so it's not a small amount. Typically, to Mr. Dais's point, we would say, oh, it's paid for by the grant. In the grant application, it says, you know, professional development, that type of thing. This has nothing to do with it. It's not in the individual's contract. Like, in your contract, it might say, you get to go to the National Superintendent's Conference or something like that. When we do individual contracts with people, we either give them the right to do that, or we list it and say, they're entitled to go to X conference at our expense, things like that. This is not like that. So, this is coming out of a field as far as budgets, and as we sit here and say, well, are we going to scrutinize, are we going to spend $2,300 on this or something else? That's what I think makes this situation different than the typical ones that just go.
No, I understand, and I know that we do have, sometimes through grant funding, we either say, don't worry, it's not costing us anything. It's grant-funded, and it aligns with whatever that particular work is. So, I definitely understand that. There is, I believe Mr. Ventura participated last year in this conference. It is an annual conference. I think it can be, you know, up for discussion in terms of what the, you know, what we get coming out of it, without a doubt. My assumption is that when we have any of our administrators go to professional development, there is an expectation that upon their return, there is some, there's something to show for it, whether it's in the training that we provide or in any materials that are developed coming out of a training. And that would be, that would be the expectation.
I think I would agree with what you're saying. Did we pay for this last year?
I don't know. I wasn't paying as close attention, so I'm not sure how it was funded. I think it was funded through the operating budget, because I don't necessarily know that we had.
So, if it's professional development, I mean, we have grants throughout, title grants and stuff that we might be able to look at. The hard part for me is just looking at how much money we're spending across in the operating budget that we cannot spend this $2,300. So, that's the part for me, and even the outcome. If it was last year, what was the outcome? Because that should be, you know, in the backup, saying, last year, this is what happened, and this was the result. So, now, this year, I want to go again, and this is what the hope is to get a result. I mean, it just can't be conferences just because. So, I'm not, I want to vote for this, because we haven't necessarily gone over the whole process. But I think, my advice would be to try to look at it before it comes forward with what is the outcome. And maybe that we have to create a policy that says, anyone that goes away has to do a couple of slides or something relative to what is the benefit of it. So, if somebody in the public says, what did Mr. Ventura get out of $2,300 in Vegas at a conference? I don't know what to tell them. I'd say, I'll ask you, and then you'll tell him, but maybe we should just get it. I yield. Thank you.
All right. Deb, want to call the roll, please, on donations, on travel?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dais?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Number nine is the acceptance of donations.
Motion to accept.
Second.
We have two donations that the Superintendent will read right after we vote. Deb, would you call the roll on those, please?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dais?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Ms. Superintendent Curly.
On behalf of the Health and Physical Education Director, Dan Fitzgerald, we accept a donation of $500 from Gold Medal Bakery. The donation will be used to offset the cost of T-shirts for athletes competing in Special Olympics. And on behalf of Spencer Borden Elementary School Principal, Eric Bradley, and the MLL Department, we accept a donation of $1,158 from the mass agriculture in the classroom. This donation will be used to create a pollinator garden in the upper courtyard at Spencer Borden.
Oh, nice. Thank you, and thank you to the contributors. Number 10 is the approval of grants.
Motion to accept.
We have one tonight. I have a motion, a second, discussion on the one grant. Hearing none. Deb, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dais?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Approval of contracts. We have not, we only have one?
One.
Make a motion to accept.
I wish to hold it.
Well, it's the only one, Mr. Dais. There's only one.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, I have a motion to approve.
Second, with a question.
I have a second, Mr. Dais.
Thank you. So, I did read the report on this, and I do support it. However, I didn't know there's anyone in the audience today after what we just went through over the last month, if we can just talk about how this will help publicly with future cyber incidents in the community in this district.
I don't see anyone out in the audience, but I'd be happy to read the justification and the rationale that was provided by our CIO. Mr. Cabral?
So, the upgrade would include replacement and reconfiguration of existing server farm clusters, installation of updated CPU firmware to address known security vulnerabilities, and an upgrade of security firmware across all services, servers, and cluster management interfaces, the reallocation and rebalancing of virtual machines to ensure redundancy and optimal load distribution, as well as the implementation of hardened baseline configurations to reduce future attack vectors. So, we're looking to increase system resilience and uptime, improve cybersecurity defenses in alignment with best practices, optimize virtual machine performance and load balancing, and allow for easier recovery in the event of future incidents.
Thank you. And this is a general comment. I think it's, and I said this privately, I just want to say it publicly. I think it's really important that we be as transparent as we can with the community as to what happened over the last month. I've received many calls placing blame on the district when I, from the information I know, I believe it's otherwise. So, I think it's important that we tell the community exactly what happened and how this will not happen again, how we're going to get to the bottom of this. I yield.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you call the roll on the contract?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dais?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now, it's to the Committee of the Hall, 12-1, discussion and vote of the investigation outcome of complaints directed by school committee member, again, directed to, I'm sorry, school committee member Kevin Agia, as presented by Attorney Assad, School Committee Legal Counsel. Mr. Assad.
Thank you. This concerns complaints of harassment and bullying filed by two employees of the district alleging violations of district policies by Kevin Agia. I remember the former school committee. This matter was investigated by the law firm of Valerio, Dominello, and Hillman. Attorney Robert Hillman conducted the investigation and is here today at the podium to present his findings. But first, the mayor has a statement to make.
It's something very important. At the onset, we are only here to discuss complaints against Kevin Agiar. No other individuals have been noticed of any potential discussion about them, nor have any agenda been posted for such discussion. Any statements or comments related to complaints, charges against other public employees are therefore out of order, and the Chair will order those comments to cease. Under the open meeting law, where the committee discusses the reputation or character of any person or complaints are charged against any person, that person has certain specific procedural rights. Member Agiar, who is the subject of the allegations that resulted in the investigation, has been given those rights and is asked that the matter be addressed in open session. I am instructing the committee and the public that there are no discussions about the actions or conduct of any other person tonight. Any such person has the same rights and must be given notice of those rights in writing at least 48 hours before the meeting. Accordingly, any such discussion tonight would violate the open meeting law. As Chair, it is my duty to conduct the meeting in accordance with the law.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Larrabee?
Thank you. I make a motion that.
I didn't know he had his hand up.
I'd like to make.
She was, she had her hand up first.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
No, he presented. He's done.
I'm done.
No, no, no. After Mr. Hillman.
Oh, oh, okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a statement regarding your ruling. I did reach out to the Division of Open Government regarding the instances that you just made, which refute what you just said about the notification. The notification requirements you just mentioned only apply, and I have the letter, email, right here, and I'll send this over to you, only apply to executive session. And regarding the agenda, it says, "Investigation outcome of complaints directed to school committee member Kevin Agiar." It's my opinion that this, and as rightfully should, should be up for remote, open discussion. Again, I respectfully refute your interpretation of the open meeting law. I'd like to make a motion to appeal the ruling of the Chair.
Second.
Obviously, I was advised of this by legal counsel.
Correct.
I'm not sure what Mr. Dais is talking about, but I would strongly urge that any intentional activation or bringing up of someone else's name during this portion of it, while still respecting Committee Man Agiar's rights, would not be prudent and could lead to intentional problems for this committee. I'm just erring on the side of caution.
Mr. Mayor?
There will be opportunity in the future to give people appropriate notice to come forward if that's what the committee decides.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Assad, hold on.
Can I ask for a two-minute recess, or Attorney Assad can at least read the paper?
You got it right here. Go ahead.
I got it. Thank you.
You're good?
All right. The.
All right. The, with respect to the open meeting law, there is a provision in the open meeting law that's, it's actually section, section one, that indicates about notice to an individual. And that notice does direct to a, an executive session. And there is wording in the actual statute itself that indicates that an individual can opt out of executive session and actually have it in the open session. And there's a question as to whether or not the protections under executive session would apply to the, the open session meetings. The language in the statute itself does not state that they do have that type of, of protection. However, that does not make any sense, that you would have a litany of protections for an individual in executive session and not open session. Mr. Dias brings up a very valid point, a point that we've had also. However, there are many times during the law and in the law, in interpreting statutes, where words don't mean what they mean. And I, and I mean that as something that, as an attorney that has seen that happen over and over again. There are certain things that are allowed in the statute, certain things that are not. I've had discussions with this with other counsel. I've tried to have a discussion with the, the Attorney General's Office. One of the things that we are going to do is we're going to request an advisory opinion from them because we can find no real case that actually interprets it, that is on file right now, that would have any persuasive value whatsoever. That being said, it doesn't matter for our particular purposes here tonight because the, the individual that is on the agenda is Mr. Agia. There is no notice about any other individual being discussed. And therefore, in accordance even with the open meeting law, if it's not on the agenda, it cannot be discussed. So anything that's brought up concerning any other individual other than Mr. Agia is inappropriate and should be ruled out of order. I caution everyone that if in fact that is not done, there could be potential liability and consequences for not only the district, but also the individual. And, and that to adhere to what the restrictions are is not only the safest, but it's the appropriate thing to do, certainly because of the open meeting law and also potentially and probably, once the AG has a chance to weigh in on it, would, would find that you don't lose your protections during an open session. I don't know what the answer is going to be to that, and neither does anybody else in this room. But we do know that it's not appropriate to discuss other individuals since they are not on the agenda. And Mr. Hillman, Attorney Hillman, if you want to weigh in on that, please, please do so.
On the issue of the open meeting law, obviously I was retained as, to investigate this matter rather than to give general legal advice, but the investigations and the presentation of the investigation is guided by the open meeting law. Purpose one of the open meeting law protects the privacy interests of persons who, employees, public employees, including in this case, Mr. Agia, who exercised his right to waive executive session discussion in which certain rights are guaranteed by the statute. And this, I'll make this presentation and, and with that waiver in mind. However, to the extent that the persons who asserted the complaints, if there's any interest in discussing them or their job performance or any other issues concerning them, those purpose one rights attach to them. They have not been noticed for this meeting. They have not been offered those protections. They have not been given the opportunity to, to waive purpose one and therefore that any actions by any persons other than Mr. Agia cannot be discussed in this meeting. And I will not discuss them. I am not going to participate in a violation of the open meeting law. And in addition, Attorney Assad mentioned consequences. You should bear in mind that these complainants engaged in protected activity. I assume that you have some familiarity with what that is. I'm not going to stand here and, and give a, a long string of advice about that. But to the extent that there's a potential violation of the open meeting law directed at someone who engaged in protected activity, Mr., I would second Mr. Assad's cautions about liability for retaliation or invasion of privacy. And that is both for the district that you serve and potentially as individuals. So you asked me to comment, Mr. Assad?
Vote call.
That's what I've got.
Vote call.
Anything further on the ruling of the chair? What is the motion? I'll read it again, Deb, please.
To appeal your ruling that we cannot speak on other subjects.
Again, I would follow the legal advice. Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Motion is to doubt the ruling of the chair.
To doubt the ruling of the chair?
Yep.
No. No.
Ms. Larve?
No.
Ms. Pereira?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
No. Go ahead with yours.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Oh, are you presenting, sir?
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia?
Can I ask a pointed question?
To who?
To you. Who is actually running this situation? Because the vice chair continually wants to say something.
She's got a motion that she wants to put.
But she's only saying it because Attorney Assad is telling her to say it. And now twice now.
We're following, listen.
Hold on. And twice now, you've had to interrupt her because she's not even paying attention to what is supposed to be happening. Who is actually running the meeting? Is it Attorney Assad?
The meeting is being run in a legal sense because this stuff is fraught with dangers for the entire committee. We, there is no reason that your rights can't be protected along with the rights of every member up here. And all we're doing is trying to make sure.
I understand.
We're following a legal path. It's, this is a treacherous legal slope we're on.
Mr. Chair?
You asked for a public meeting.
Yep.
We're giving you exactly what you want.
Mr. Chairman, this is my only question.
You keep interrupting, but that's okay.
This is my only comment.
No, you keep.
Can you do me a favor?
Yep.
And please let Ms. Larve know when she can speak because you guys obviously orchestrated this. Just let her know to let this gentleman present. Stop interrupting you and let this gentleman present.
Thank you.
Then she can make the scripted motion that the three of you met to talk about.
To make sure you're protected, Mr. Agia.
Yep.
Okay.
Let the gentleman present, please.
Yeah. Mr. Hillman, you're up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Robert Hillman. I am an attorney with the firm of Valerio, Dominello and Hillman. Our firm was retained by.
Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, here we.
Sorry to interrupt. I apologize. I apologize.
You can't help yourself, Kevin.
Sorry to interrupt.
You just can't help.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
But the vice chair is telling me that I'm a bully across the stage right while you're there and making faces and everything.
All right.
Get some order, please.
Let's go, Mr. Hillman.
I'll point and clarify.
Why not?
Why not?
Thank you. Yeah, can we, I'll let Mr. Bailey. Yeah, I was just asking, when we just took that vote, we're talking about pretty much redacting everyone's names that was involved. That's not the discussion that we have on the agenda. We're taking a vote not to do, correct?
What?
Because it says a discussion and vote. So after he presents.
After he presents.
After he presents, yeah.
Okay, all right. That was just.
Well, go ahead, Mr. Hillman.
Thank you. My firm was retained by the Fall River Public Schools to investigate two complaints, or rather complaints filed by two employees of the Fall River Public Schools. Each complaint really constituting two complaints. I was asked to attend this meeting to present the outcome of the investigation of the complaints, which were directed to school committee member Kevin Agia. My presentation will be succinct and will address only the topics on the posted agenda, which are the outcome of that investigation. The outcome, as you are aware, is that the facts developed during the investigation did not support a finding of a violation of the, of school committee policies by member Agia as alleged in those complaints. The basis of the outcome is as follows. Two employees submitted complaints on district complaint forms. Both complained that Mr. Agia had violated district policies, primarily by statements that he made in school committee meetings, but in both cases with some ancillary complaints of potential alleged conduct outside of those meetings. The statements had issued, the public statements particularly related to the departments in which these employees worked and were critical of the performance of those, those departments. Neither named the employees, neither used the employees' names. Both complainants inserted, asserted that there were, the conduct alleged violated two school committee policies, the anti-harassment policy and the anti-bullying policy. The investigation included an interview with the complainants, review of the complaint documents and other relevant documents, interviews with district witnesses and an interview with Mr. Agia. With respect to the complaints, first, did Mr. Agia violate the anti-bullying policy? The answer is no, because the district's anti-bullying policy as it's presently constituted applies only to students. These two employees were not students, therefore the anti-bullying policy wasn't implicated. The second policy that both employees complained were violated was the district's anti-harassment policies. The district's anti-harassment policies is district, is directed to harassment based on a protected characteristic. This includes race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, and approximately 10 other enumerated categories. These are often referred to as protected classes or protected categories. Harassment would be conduct directed to an individual because of their membership in, in such a group or the, or having such a characteristic. The investigation led to the conclusion that even if any of the statements could generally be characterized as harassment, they were not directed any protected characteristic of the two complainants. Therefore, there should, could be no violation of the school committee's anti-harassment policy as it is written. The outcome of the investigation is to recommend to the school committee adopt the conclusion that no violation of a district policy was demonstrated concerning Mr. Agia, to take no further action on the complaints other than to direct school committee counsel to issue notices of outcome on the complaints to the complainants and to Mr. Agia. And that is the, the, the agenda item was to report on the outcome. The outcome and recommendation is just that. Mr. Chairman?
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Slidely.
Ready?
Yep.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Hillman. So I move that the school committee adopt the conclusion of the investigation and therefore take no action based on the allegations that led to the investigation other than to direct, to direct counsel to issue notices of outcome as to the subject and to the complainant.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Mr. Bailey?
There was just some questions and it's not directed because the claims were found untrue. And because they were found untrue, a question I always ask when an allegation is made and is found untrue, then what? Oh, sorry. When an allegation is made and they're found untrue, then what? So if I'm Mr. Agia and allegation is made of some type of harassment or something, then what for me, right? Then secondly, if we're looking at this case, was there ever an investigation conducted on Mr. Agia's complaints if they're not found? And what does that look like? So it's a two-part question. I don't know if I should ask that later or now, but I do think they're valid questions.
Bobby, I think, unless I'm wrong, I think this was the investigation.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about an investigation. I'm not talking about the investigation on Mr. Agia. I'm talking about an investigation on some of the things that Mr. Agia has been saying. And that's something we could talk about if we have to talk about it later.
Yeah, that's, it can't be talked about tonight.
Okay, yeah. Why is that?
Because there are no other individuals on, listed on the agenda.
We just, we just went over that.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias?
Not going to support this motion. Who, who is on the record for seconding that motion?
You were.
Thank you. I, the reason I did that was to withdraw it when I, I see fit. However, the issue that I have with all of this, Mr. Bailey just brought up some great points. We don't need to mention anyone's names to talk about the substance in the report. This agenda says investigation outcome of complaints directed to committee member Agia. Investigation outcome of complaints. And we're being told today, we can't discuss the outcome of the complaints? I have some very serious questions on, on the substance of the report. And in my opinion, there's other sections of the open meeting law which state when an item is presented. Actually, let me read the exact, the exact language of the open meeting law. Notwithstanding this paragraph, the following materials. A little bit up more. The open meeting law states, and this comes right from the Attorney General's Office, so I believe we already have an advisory opinion, states that the minutes of any open session, the notes, recording, or other materials used in the preparation of such minutes, and all documents and exhibits used at the session shall be public records in their entirety and not exempt from disclosure pursuant to any of the exemptions under clause 26 of section seven of chapter four. Notwithstanding this paragraph, the following material shall be exempt from disclosure to the public as personnel information. One, materials used in a performance evaluation of an individual bearing on his professional competence, provided they were not created by the members of the body for the purposes of the evaluation. And two, materials used in deliberations about employment or appointment of individuals, including applications and supporting materials provided, however, that any resume submitted by an applicant should not be exempt. None of this applies here. In my opinion, the entire document is a public record pursuant to the open meeting law. I, I'm just saying, I don't see anything that prohibits any member from disseminating that report. With that being said, Mr., we, we just discussed that there are individual rights and if the rights aren't in, in purpose one, they're implied to be within open session. Someone correct me if I'm wrong, the attorneys on the stage. So with that being said, we didn't give any opportunity for Mr. Agia to give any comment. We just jumped right to a motion to try and bury this thing and bury the substance in this material, which we, as a committee, have received no confirmations on. That's unacceptable. It's unbelievable. I'm withdrawing my second. I'd like to make a motion that we file an outside investigation into the. I withdraw my second.
Mr. Hold on.
I withdrew my second.
So someone else can now second the motion if they want to.
I, that, that.
We still have her motion. You withdrew.
But it's withdrawn to second, so the motion's dead. The motion is dead. Your motion is gone. Sorry, Ms. Larve. And I am making a motion that we launch an outside, a second outside investigation into the substance of this report.
Do I have a, do we, do we hear a second?
Is there a second?
On which motion?
On Mr. Dias's motion.
So mine doesn't get a second?
We're going to go again. You, yours.
I'm not really sure what just happened.
I know.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, can I talk for one second?
Ms. Pereira.
Did we get a second?
Hold on. Ms. Pereira has got the floor.
Thank you.
There was no second on Mr. Dias's motion.
Well, there was.
Thank you.
Talking about Ms. Larve's.
Do I have the floor or not?
Yes.
I don't want to speak out. Okay. I'm trying really hard not to speak out of turn, something I've been working on. I'm very confused for a few reasons. First of all, I, I thought this was on the agenda so that this attorney, this kind man, could come forward and let us know that these allegations which he alluded to, he did the investigation. My colleague was found not harassing, or I guess bullying, we don't have a policy, but not harassing anyone. I'm not quite sure what more needs to be discussed about it. When this was in an executive session, my colleague had an opportunity to speak and he did, and we listened, and we voted for it to be investigated, knowing full well that probably was going to be found innocent. But I, or whatever, I don't know if innocent's the word. But I, I, I look more at it as I think that we have to be really careful with the tone that we're using here because it appears that, and I could be wrong, but it appears that. we're using here because it appears that, and I could be wrong, but it appears that we're making assumptions or allegations that maybe the people who made complaints shouldn't have or what have you, I don't know. But what I want to make sure doesn't happen, I don't want any employee of the Florida School Department to ever feel they can't come forth if they feel harassed or bullied. I think it's really important that, that should totally be open. Now, whether it comes to fruition that that's true, sometimes it's not. Sometimes people just aren't nice. That doesn't mean they're harassing. Unfortunately, that's the way the world works. But I certainly don't want any employee of the Florida School Department to feel that they can't in any way, if they feel, because those are real feelings, harassed or bullied, that they can't come forth and talk about it. It doesn't mean that it's going to be found to have happened, as in this case. So other than my colleague, I feel sort of getting some validation here, right, that he wasn't harassing, which I think is a positive thing, as far as the committee goes. I'd like to be happy that my fellow colleagues weren't harassing people, so I'm very happy with this. I don't see the issue in adopting it. I do think maybe we should, you know, because we love policy meetings, I think we definitely should look at obviously implementing a bullying policy. I thought one was already implemented previously, but apparently I was mistaken, it's not the time to talk about it, but certainly should be at a policy subcommittee meeting. With that being said, what I'm really confused about now is, my colleague, Ms. Larry, made a motion, you seconded it, you removed your second, but does that mean the motion's off the table?
My opinion.
Well, I'm not asking your opinion.
Somebody else.
You don't even know you made the sec yet. You've jumped up and screamed yes and forgot you did it.
Hold on, hold on. Ms. Larry has the floor. Go ahead.
I'm asking a question.
She's going to make it again, yeah.
It's still on the floor. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second.
With that, I yield.
Mr. Dias.
Thank you. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that we instruct outside legal counsel to look into the substance nature of this complaint and the issues that were raised by Mr. Aguirre.
Do I have a second on the amendment? Hearing none. Deb, can we vote on Ms. Larry's motion? Mr. Aguirre.
Just a few things. So thank you, sir, for presenting. One thing you did mention that you had two issues. One was that to make a vote to say that we're accepting the conclusions. But you said something interesting relative to notice the complainants. Can you please articulate what that is?
In any investig-, no, it's a good question. In any investigation, at the conclusion of the investigation, the complainants and the subject or target of the investigation get a notice that says, "An investigation happened." And in your case, there was an outcome and it was, you know, the case not proved. It's a short document that simply advises the participants that the investigation occurred.
Sort of put in a closure to it, I guess, is the way that it goes.
Yeah, exactly.
Every professional development, anything that I've ever been to relative to complainants like that, what you said is exactly what they, any presenter says, any quality HR department, any person that hasn't any clue about doing an investigation, that what you just put is absolutely true. But the part that gets me is this school department and the HR departments that we've had for the last several years has not, has not, still to this day, when Matt Malone was investigated and there was findings, the complainants in that issue, still to this day, years later, and Matt Malone did a heck of a lot worse than anybody's talking about here, never got a complaint notice. So what you're saying, sir, is that, I think, is the law and the way you're supposed to do it. I would encourage the superintendent to look back to all investigations or to Attorney Assad or whoever in HR, because those people haven't gotten those same rights, and that's just not right. I ask for this to be an open session because, quite frankly, it should be an open session. There's several citizen input times which you did not reference as part of this, as sort of, this is now a close, like you can't mention the names of the people that filed the complaint. But those same individuals filed a citizen input time in public with their name on it, which was making some accusations relative to several events that happened, so-called alleged events. The part that I'm missing is, I don't know why you cannot speak to those events as part of this report, because I asked right from the get-go to my, all of my colleagues that said, if these accusations that they want to put on a citizen input time, I said two things. One is I have no problem investigating it with an outside person. Secondly, if that's going to be the case for this complaint on a citizen input time against this member, then we need to do that for all members consistently across the board. And we continue to not do that. That's, that's for another day, and that's for this committee to decide. But there's plenty of accusations that were public based on their citizen input time, which was the impetus for this particular investigation, and you were not telling us and the public that you can comment on any of those. And I think that's what Mr. Bailey was talking about. They threw a bunch of stuff out, and you, you gave the opinion after doing an investigation. You went and checked emails, you checked my emails versus the superintendent's or whatever. You did your due diligence, I give you credit for that. That's what an investigation is. But now the investigation outcome comes, and you blacked out all of the information relative to any of the situations that the gentleman put in their citizen input time, which is a public document. So I believe firmly that this is going to be a public document, anybody can request it, and I think that you redacted way too much, in my opinion. But I appreciate what you, what you presented. The last statement, and I will read this because I think it is very important to what happens. If Aguirre is transmitting information concerning employee conduct to the district administration that is within the scope of his representing responsibilities as a school committee member, that's your quote in this document, right at the end. That's the last sentence. Is that true? Has nobody else's name in it? This is my name, and I'm giving-
There's, there's, there's context, but if those words sound like, those words sound right.
You wrote it right from the report, so.
Mm-hmm. But there's, there was, that was in, your colleagues have seen the report as well. I don't need to explain what was written.
I'm sure that-
Those words are there, absolutely.
So basically, the school committees have a responsibility when they find out there's misconduct in one way or another, potentially, to pass that information on to the administration. I consider that administration to be superintendent or the mayor. And in these cases, I did just that. You said that basically that's part of our responsibilities. I would encourage that we move on from this, but at the same time, this report is going to be public so people can get it and read it and see what they, your findings detailed everything that those gentlemen accused in the citizen input time of. And you wrote in there relative to why and how, that also has implications for Dr. Curley as superintendent, to now read this report and determine if there's anything in this report, like any other report, that requires her to do something as superintendent. Not me as a school committee member, not any member here. So now that the report is out, the unredacted report is in her hands and our hands. I think we should move on, but also look at it, and if there's things that need to be corrected and addressed, please address them. I yield.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias?
I'll be quick. Appreciate my colleague's remarks, and I am happy he is exonerated. This has been happening, I'm sure I can say this, this has been happening since I joined the committee, and it's raked up quite a bill on the taxpayers. If I can ask one question, if you have the answer, attorney. When, a complaint is filed against an elected official, when, when, what's the criteria or the threshold that that should be referred to an outside agency?
What do you mean by outside agency?
Such as yourself, so.
Okay, I'm not an agency. I'm a private lawyer who was hired to be an outside investigator. The criteria is essentially when the board determines that it's appropriately investigated by somebody outside of the school district, the school administration, or the city. There may be circumstances in which Mr. Assad is the appropriate investigator. I think he concluded that this was not one of them. And people hire outside investigators. School districts that my firm is school counsel for occasionally when matters come up that seem appropriately investigated by somebody who doesn't have an ongoing work relationship or a professional relationship with the district, if the board decides that it's appropriate to bring in an outside investigator, they do it.
Attorney Assad, can I ask you, has that threshold been, been used just for Mr. Aguirre? What was the threshold for referring Mr. Aguirre's complaint to an outside agency for investigation?
There were complaints that were made against a school committee, elected school committee official. There is no one in the department who would not be somewhat conflicted to be able to do an investigation, and that is the reason why an outside investigator was recommended and hired.
Thank you. Again, I'm not blaming yourself, Mr. Assad, I'm not blaming anyone specifically here. However, I don't believe that threshold has been applied equally across this committee. I yield.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Cogan?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Aguirre.
Attorney Hillman, so the redacting portion of the report, was that in your original, I guess, contract or scope of work?
Was what?
Redacting the report.
Producing a document that would comply with the public records law and the open meeting law was something I was, that, that we were asked to perform, so I would say, yes, it was.
Even though it wasn't asked at the time, I, I'm just trying to figure out what you were hired for, and I'm not-
It's, it's customarily something that one does in connection with reports and with public, with any engagement that relates to the open meeting law or the public records law. You know, redaction isn't broken out as a, you know, as a, as a different service. It's, it's part of the legal services of providing an investigation.
I understand the need, just, I'm trying to figure out, from our perspective, Mr. Chairman, can I get an answer on who is actually responsible in the district for redacting reports? From our district?
I would say that would have to go through legal counsel to give us the best advice so that we don't do something-
Redact what?
Redacting the report.
That report that you had?
Yep.
That was done by Mr. Hillman.
No, I'm, I mean, any, any reports that need to get redacted, any redactions. Does that fall under Attorney Assad? Does that fall under the superintendent's office? I'm just trying to figure out who is responsible to redact the-
The, it depends, it actually depends on what the situation is. For instance, with respect to executive session minutes, it first goes to the superintendent and chair, and then they seek advice from the, from the attorney. In the past, I have redacted the minutes, the executive session minutes before they are made public.
So I just think we need to get some clarity on that. I was asking you that, sir, because when I find, found out today that the bill for your services was over $21,000, I got to be honest, it has nothing to do with you. I'm not sure even the school committee knew that we were going to spend $20,000 on this because this is a waste of money. And $21,000 is a lot of money. Matt Malone did a lot worse, and I think we'd be 25 grand. So the committee voted for this, I get it, but $21,000 is a little, but now you're going to add a bill for redacting, I'm assuming that 21,000 is going to go up, I would assume, because I just got that from the superintendent today.
I, if it's-
We got this report Sunday, so I'm assuming you didn't bill ahead of time, right? And you got to get your services-
Billing ahead of, billing ahead of time would be very problematic. So, yeah, I think you can take that.
A little bit, there's going to be a little extra.
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you, sir. I yield.
12-2. A vote to approve school choice for out-of-district students?
I wasn't allowed to ask a question as well.
Mr. Dias, can we get on with the agenda, please? We voted no, we're moving on. Mr. Hillman presented at least-
What do we vote no on?
We vote, I'm sorry, we voted yes to accept the report. We're done.
I just had one question, one question, if I may. Could you tell us who asked you to redact the report and what date that was?
My point of contact with the committee has been through Attorney Assad, and I don't recall what the date was.
Okay, that's fine. I yield.
Recently.
12-2. Is a vote to approve school choice to honor district students in grades six to 12 and non-resident students in grade K to five for the Florida Public School employees consistent with the collective bargaining agreement for the 25, 26 school years presented by Tracy Curley?
Most to approve.
I have a most to approve, I have a second. Any discussion on that? Mr. Dias?
Going to vote to approve it, however, I did not see, I personally didn't see in the backup the updated collective bargaining language that relates, that pertains to this. I don't know if there's been any changes from the last one. I was wondering if the committee could be forwarded that, that language.
Yes.
Thank you. I yield.
Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Aguirre, I'm sorry.
If Dr. Curley can explain the, I'm trying to read through the, no need for, we've always had a public hearing on school choice, just to, for the edification of the public, or I'm not sure-
Yes.
-why we wouldn't have it, but you must have a reason.
Yeah, so it basically came to, I know that last year, we ended up, we did not make the June 1 deadline, but it did not, we didn't make the June 1 deadline because we actually voted on school choice at the June meeting. This year, not knowing where the vote would fall, I didn't know if there were going to be, you know, questions about, you know, enrollment or concerns over school choice and things like that, I wanted to make sure, and I will say, it didn't matter that we did it in June last year because you actually don't even have to take the vote and report out unless you're going to change your status. And as we looked at the, putting it on the May agenda and actually needed to move that public hearing to May, we would have ended up with two separate public hearings. I happened, I just, I looked up the requirements for that public hearing and realized that we, the public hearing wasn't necessary. It wasn't a requirement. The language says, "The hearing and the school committee's vote can occur at the same meeting and may occur at a scheduled school committee meeting, provided there is notice to the public that this item will be discussed and that members of the public are afforded an opportunity to participate and make their positions known to the school committee prior to the vote. A separate meeting is not required for the purpose." So.
Only problem I have, and I'm guessing you're recommending no changes?
Right.
But the line that I think is problematic says, "The receiving district can withdraw from school choice only if a school committee holds a public hearing on the issue and then votes to withdraw."
Right, but the next sentence says, "The hearing and the school committee's vote can occur at the same meeting and may occur at a scheduled," so it says you, you have to hold a public hearing, but for the purposes of this, having it on the agenda and having-
Is equivalent to a public hearing. It's what you're saying. This is not, it's conflicting a little bit, but you're-
I hear what you're saying.
Your recommendation is basically no changes-
Right.
-in general.
Mm-hmm.
And did you look at any thought in withdrawing? Like, did your team or anybody look at?
Yeah, we did. I mean, I think our primary concerns around enrollment are at the elementary level, and our policy has only ever included secondary, so we felt pretty confident in that way. The, in, for the current year, we only had 35 total students who enrolled, and 23 of those were secondary. I think six of those 23 are students of our, of our staff at the secondary level, and so we, we felt comfortable with that kind of number, around 23 students this year, moving forward, that we would be able to accommodate that. If we were not a district of choice, we would be, we, if we're not enrolled in, if we don't have school choice, then any of the students coming into the district who are the, the students of our staff members, we wouldn't be able to participate in school choice and get that reimbursement.
Right, that's just, the reimbursement is not good.
No.
So, for 35 students, that is $5,000, we get $150,000, whereas we're educating students and our amount is over 20-something thousand.
Right. That is helpful, yeah.
That's a big difference. That's a half a million dollars difference in what we would get from the state from taking kids in. So now we take 35 students, and we're only getting $5,000 each. When we have overcrowding, we have other issues, so I think it's just something to look at moving forward.
Yeah, I think that we don't, on the, on the 12 who come in K through five, came in K through five this year, where that is something that we, that we're, we have a contractual obligation to our staff members. And then when we look at the six through 12, the additional 23 students, as I said, the concerns aren't as great when we look at 23, 23 students spread across three of our traditional middle schools plus our, you know, the K to eight schools, and then another 17 at the high school.
And I'm not privy to the, to look at it, but we need, I think when we look at, what do those 12 look like? What, the students that are choosing to come- The students that are choosing to come here, some other places, what are their demographics? What is their behavior? You know, like, what else is happening? Because I think it might get, we've heard that the middle schools are crowded, the high schools crowded, and what are we, by allowing it, are we making a detriment to our own students, potentially? Because, what, I don't know, you would have to figure that out, but I'm gonna vote for this because there's no change, but I think for next year, we have to, we should look at whether we withdraw all total votes.
Sure.
Mr. Corey?
Madam Superintendent, with the motion like this, you just recently held a job fair, do these questions come up at the job fair? Like, if I choose to work in your district, can I bring my child along with me?
I don't know if any came up at this job fair, but we do get those kinds of inquiries.
That's what I'm saying, those types of inquiries come along, so a motion like this would put you in a position to help recruit teachers from other districts into ours. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's, so reimbursement aside, I look at this as a recruitment plus, to try to help our district and shore up our own shortages, you know?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So that's one of the reasons why I'm voting yes on this. Thank you, I yield.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dragia?
Just a follow-up, the middle school enrollments, are we having any issues with the enrollment, or are we, do we have plenty of space in the middle schools to be taking students in?
So, I think what we find is that the enrollment across middle schools is not, is not equal, right? And some of that has to do with the fact that we do, you know, we do, over the summer, we're collecting requests from families to go to other middle schools, so we are reviewing all of that right now, because we do have some overcrowding in middle schools that we believe is a result of, or at least one of the contributing factors, is the number of families who choose into the school in district, and it's something that we need to really keep an eye on moving into next year, and already know that there might be at some schools, some grade levels, that we already know we cannot take any additional students who, you know, from parents who want to choice into a particular middle school.
Then they just get denied?
Um...
Like, they would have to shift to the others, or how are we gonna...
Yeah, well, I'm talking about someone who might live, you know, they live in one middle school neighborhood, and they put in an application so that their student could go to a different middle school. And so, we really need to be cognizant of the fact that at some grade levels, we're already reaching a level of, we know already that we might need to say no. What happens in terms of school choice is that we also wouldn't let students choose into that grade level if they were coming from out of district either.
So, any of the students that are in middle school now that are on choice are gonna get pushed to the other school?
No, I believe the practice has been, and we actually started talking about it this week, we believe that the practice has been that if, once you choose into a school, that you are, that you can remain. And I will tell you that that does become problematic in our enrollment from year to year, because...
And that's your decision?
That has been the practice.
But you're the superintendent now, so you can change it.
Yep, and I know, and I'm not, you know, I understand that difficult decisions will have to be made, but I also know that in doing that, if I said to you or anybody else right now, we have like 50 students at Morton who choice in, and we really need them to go back to their middle schools, my guess is that there will be 50 phone calls to me, to the committee, and I will immediately start getting emails about how it's unfair that we let someone start 6th grade at a middle school, and that we're not allowing them to continue, or someone was, has been there in 6th and 7th grade, and now they're in 8th grade, and why would we ever send them to another middle school in 8th grade? So, that is some of the, those are some of the kind of easy, what should be kind of easy moves that we should be able to make, that I do think we'll be a little bit, like, tied up with when we look to make those decisions.
If we can take another look at it, the documentation for a school choice student should say, "You're not guaranteed to this enrollment."
I would agree with you.
So, I don't know that it exists, but...
If we take in school choi, I just wanna say, the statute requires us, if we do take in a student school choice, they do get to remain with us, like, literally from out of district, if we take in someone from, you know, Somerset or Berkeley or whatever. But in terms of our practice in district, we, I think what we need to do is make a decision. At the very least, I can tell you that moving forward, when someone says, "I want to send my child to, you know, this school," it will come with a letter that says, "If there's no room next year, your student's gonna have to go back to their neighborhood school." There's a question of what to do with the students who are potentially overcrowding some of our schools right now, who were not given that notice. That's the discussion.
The only last point I make is on school choice, if a student's expelled from a school anywhere, can we say that they cannot come to school under school choice?
I, no, I don't believe so.
And that becomes a problem, because if we have to start accepting students that have been expelled from other places, they're gonna be sitting next to our own students, and we can do nothing at all about them. So I think it's something to look at for next year. I yield.
Superintendent, did that change?
I don't know...
At one point, expelled students couldn't enroll in any...
I believe that they can. I will clarify, I'll send the language, but I believe I just read that.
Okay, it might've changed the way things are changing, but I did know at one time they couldn't, so, okay. Mr. Dias?
Yeah, just on that last point, and it's gonna determine how I vote, do we have a number of how many students have been expelled under the...
I do not.
Would you imagine it's over 10?
I would say zero.
Zero.
I don't think we have anybody who's been expelled from another district. I don't think so. I will absolutely take a look.
I yield.
Deb, can you call the roll, please? On 12-2.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-3, is a discussion and vote to approve the start and end times for school year 25, 26, as presented by Dr. Tracy Curley.
Moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any discussion on the start and end times?
Chair.
Mr., Ms. Pereira?
No, it wasn't me.
Oh, yeah, oh, Mr. Dias.
Thank you. Again, I'm not necessarily, this is my first time with this before me as a member, and I just, general questions, have we had, have had, because I get many, throughout this year, I've received many different inquiries and, I guess, complaints from parents about either the start time or the end time at their prospective child's school. Have we've had any surveys, discussions, or anything with parents regarding start and end times, any sort of collaboration with parents?
I haven't, so, I haven't had any of those inquiries forwarded to me, so I'm not sure, like, I'm not sure where the complaints are coming from, like, what the barrier is. What I can say is that when we receive the requests to go to a different school, sometimes what is cited is, "I'd like to go to this school because they have an earlier drop-off, and I need to drop my kid and get to work." Or, "I need to go to a different school, otherwise my child is coming home at 2:30 in the afternoon, and I'm not gonna be home until 3:30," kind of thing. So I know that that is one of the, you know, those are some of the reasons that people cite when they're requesting other schools, but I haven't received any inquiries myself, and I'd be, you know, if you have more information, I would appreciate it.
Sure, it's just more, not even necessarily them looking for me to, it's just more general comments that I just have received throughout the year. I would say most of them have been directed by the middle schools, parents from the middle schools.
Because of the early start.
I believe so, and again, this is going back over a year, I haven't had received any recently, however, I just wanted to make mention of it as it comes up. I'll support this today, however, I would like to see some sort of survey go out to parents on, to give open feedback on the start and end times of their prospective school, what school their child might be attending next year, and just take that into account going forward. Again, not saying we're not doing anything different, like, from the past years into this year, I'm just saying, I think we should just try something new going forward. I yield.
Okay, Deb, call the roll, please.
Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Dragia?
Just, is there any changes to these start times?
I don't know.
I don't believe so, no.
So, in the past, we've asked, "Why do we change the start times?" And it all reflects around busing, which is a future agenda item. I'd emailed, you know, Friday about things, about tiering buses, and I haven't received a response yet, but I asked a question. I know in the past, Mr. Pacico said, "We've tiered everything we can, we have no more tiering to go to save money."
That's my understanding, yep.
And then I, my second question was, do we have, I would assume by that, that we don't have single bus routes. Is that true or not true? Meaning that the bus that goes and is not tiered?
Right.
Because we pay for the bus by the day?
Right, right.
So, we're not getting a good bankroll buck if...
I believe they're tiered, they're all tiered, but there might be some outliers if we had an odd number of schools or something.
I don't believe we have many schools that are not tiered, and we do pay for the tiers, so it's not like it's a one-shot deal.
So, all of our door-to-door buses are currently tiered. We have, I believe, six single routes on the bus stop buses.
And why would those not be tiered? Is it not possible?
The timing doesn't work out. Originally, the Talbot and Laterno buses had always been tiered, because Talbot had a, I'm sorry, Laterno had a later end time, so we were able to tier those two. When we, when one of the schools changed their end time, those can no longer be tiered. So we have the four Laterno buses and two Talbot buses that are untiered.
And do we have, how much do you pay for those? What is the rate? Mr. Pacico just mentioned you pay more.
For the upcoming, for the upcoming school year, I believe it's five...
Roughly.
I'd have to grab my paperwork.
Roughly, if it's $500 for one tier or no tier?
For an untiered bus.
Untiered bus, and how much is it for three tiers?
So, I know for the year, so, an untiered bus for the year, bus stop is $100,000, a tiered bus is, I believe, $128,000.
So it's a considerable savings to tier.
Absolutely. But if I tier those buses on the bus stop side, then I wouldn't have, if I changed the times to match the bus stop buses, it wouldn't match up on the door-to-door buses, because we don't have equal number of buses at schools.
So, but we control the start and end times?
Correct.
So, I'm not sure how I'm...
So, a school like Sylvia, for example, has four door-to-door buses. Those buses, which are generally more expensive, are tiered, four Sylvia buses with four Spencer Boardman buses. Sylvia on the bus stop buses has seven bus stop buses, and I don't have seven at Spencer Boardman, so I go pulling from our second-tier schools to match up.
So one person's getting, whatever, it's $100,000 to do three different schools and bus routes, another one is $120, or, you know, the opposite. I just think we should be tiering across the board as much as possible, because, and also, when you've no one to say this, we need to change the line so that you're not transporting kids all over the place, but...
I agree.
This particular vote is the time to say, "Are we tiering, are we not tiering?" So there should be absolutely no way that anyone can say, "Why don't we tier this particular bus if we change the start time by 10 or 15 minutes at a school, and we can save money?" There's no potential way that that can be possible.
There isn't, because if I change the time so that we can now tier all of the bus stop buses, I wouldn't be able to tier all of the door-to-door buses, and the door-to-door buses are more expensive than the bus stop buses.
I would just refer into one, you know, one, only one.
One.
So no, there's no way that anybody can say, "I don't know why this bus can't go there and save any money."
I do not.
And you said it's six total?
I believe it's six.
In the whole district? And which vendor is this?
Amaral.
And how about the Argosy Transportation, and do we transport to the other charter school?
Only special ed for Atlantis, and we transport special ed and regular ed for Argosy.
And those are all included in the route? So let's suppose those buses need to have times changed. Do they cooperate, or are we locked in?
Honestly, I've never really reached out to them as far as their times. We used to tier their middle and high school, but they did do a time change, I believe, two years ago, so those are no longer tiered.
And do they have to approve that? Get that approved by us or the city to make their time change?
Right.
That would be a cost detriment, right?
So, we've never had the conversation with them about not tiering or tiering. When it works, it works, and when it doesn't, it doesn't. As the schools grow and change, so does their transportation needs.
So if, what, she just mentioned was that we used to have a tiered system with one of the schools, and we don't, are you disagreeing that that happened?
Disagreement?
No, are you disagreeing with what she just said?
No, no, I agree. I agree.
So, if that was gonna be changed, why don't we just have them change the start times, or work with our people to change the start times so that that can be a tiered route?
Because they're not far off of our start times. There is no wiggle room. We've done everything we possibly can to make all of these times work, but there's just no wiggle room to make that work. As I said, as Argosy has changed and grown, their needs have grown also. So we don't have the wiggle room now to just adjust it 15 minutes or 20 minutes here, we don't have that.
If we have to take votes that are to change times in order to tier our buses, they should have to do the same thing. That's my only opinion, because I think it's...
We're not changing times. We're not changing any times. What we have right now is as good as we can make it. To be totally honest, we wiped out quite a few buses when we started tiering, a lot, actually.
Yeah, so I guess I, I guess I would agree with you. What it costs, you do the best you can to transport as many kids as you possibly can, and that's what the bill is. And then we gotta pay the bill. That's basically what you're saying, for Argosy or for that high school.
I don't know what else to say to that, Ms. Dragia. We are doing the very best we can with what we have to work with.
Correct, and we just have to pay the bills.
And the times. Right, and obviously, if we have an issue with parents and times, everything is on the table, so we're trying to figure out what the best method is to get students to and from school while trying to be cognizant of parents having to make choices.
I believe we should transport as many kids as possible, quite frankly, and not look at the dollar figure, and I think that's what you're saying, is to just, here's what, the best we could do, we need to transport them, here's the bill. I just was asking those questions, because if we're voting on this now, we can't change the times again next month if something comes up, correct? If we change lines, if we change the, where students go to school, we can't change these times after the fact. We're changing them now for the year.
Yes.
Thank you, I yield.
Well, we'll see. Okay, Deb, can you call the roll?
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay, I'm gonna ask the committee's indulgence, I'd like to move up two items, 12-8 and 12-9, because all our principals are here, and they gotta work tomorrow, and they were staying for those two, so we'll go to 12-8 first.
10 and 11, too.
Can I get a motion, a second on those two?
Motion.
Second.
Deb, call the roll, I'm moving...
I'm sorry, I apologize. What are we moving?
Just 12-8, 12-9, and was it...
12, 10, and 11?
12, 10, and 11.
We'll take that whole group out of order. 12-9, 12-10, 11.
We have a second.
I have a motion.
No, I have a second.
I second it.
Yep.
Huh?
12-8, 12-9, 12-10.
She said 12-8. Okay. I got a motion second. Deb, call the roll.
We're just moving these up because those two... The next couple are quick. We don't want to just get rid of them.
Go ahead. If you want to get rid of them, get rid of them.
I'd like to request unanimous consent that the committee endorse all bills for 12... 12-4 and 12-5.
Well, 12-4 and 12-5, I'll go with you. The others I'm not, though.
Second.
12-4 and 12-5.
Second.
Can we call the roll on those 12-4 and 12-5 for approval? Deb, you want to call it?
Yes. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay. So now can we get 12-8 next, please?
So just... We only have the motion.
I need a roll call. I'm moving up the last, buddy.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-8 is a discussion and vote to approve a revised Walker and Rider's policies referred by the policy subcommittee and presented by Dr. Tracy Curley. Go ahead there, Dr. Curley.
So we brought two policy subcommittee after we had referenced it here a couple of times with the full committee. Some proposed changes to the Walkers and Riders policy. And basically, we had a policy that looked to trans... That allowed for the transportation of students if they lived one or more miles from their elementary school or one and a half or more miles from their grade six through eight schools. The... We're proposing a policy change. I want to be really clear with folks because I know we've had some public discussion about this. There was certainly some public input that was shared this evening. This is not a policy that would... That looks to decrease the number of students that we're transporting. We are presenting word changes in the policy that would allow us to conduct business as usual. If we don't change the words, we will be changing the policy. I think that's the important thing to remember. If we don't change the 1 to 1.5 in grades K to 5, and we don't change the 2 to a 1.5 for... The 1.5 to 2 for grade six through eight, we will actually transport more students than what was intended by the policy. And that's because on the back end, we got some guidance from the Department of Ed around how we calculate our distances. And historically, we have calculated the distance as the crow flies. That's how it's been interpreted since the start of the policy. We're no longer able to measure distance as the crow flies. We have to think about what it actually means to walk to school, not cutting through backyards or swimming, cutting through the woods, whatever it is. Students are required to use city blocks. And in doing that, it actually increases the walking distance is actually longer than the way a crow would fly from home to school. So the idea is, if we don't change the words, we will be changing the policy. And we will be actually increasing the number of students that we are currently transporting, which was not the intent... It's not the intent of the policy. The intent was as the crow flies. Now that we have to measure differently, we need to get the words to match what's being required in terms of the measurements.
Let's go with Mr. Agia first.
So I'm looking at the policy EEAA. And I think that it looks like this is the policy where the red lines are just the changes. Is that correct?
Right. What is... When we're changing the one or more miles to the more than 1.5 miles, that is our attempt to change the numbers that are in the policy so that we can still capture the same students and transport the same students.
But the... All the stuff that's in black ink is the policy that we've been following?
Yeah.
So when I'm just simply reading it, I don't see anywhere in here where it says as the crow flies. What I do see is quite clear language that states students in grades K to 5 qualify for transportation if they live... You're trying to change it to 1.5 where it says one mile, walking distance from either their neighborhood school or from a school which they are assigned. So how it was interpreted isn't necessarily, to me, as important as... I want to transport as many kids as we can because of the needs of the kids. Not necessarily switching or... I don't really care about the crow flies things because that was... We probably should have not been doing it that way for how many years? More than we can even account for. So walking distance, in my mind, a mile and a half is a long time for a first grader to walk to school. And that's what you're recommending that we move it to?
I just want to be clear. When we had the language that said, living one or more miles away, that student might have lived 1.3 miles from school. And we had a policy that didn't transport that student. Now, we're going to change the words and we're still going to have a policy that doesn't transport the student. Because it could have been that they... On paper, it looks like... Or if you draw a one-mile radius around a school and they are living inside that radius, we would not have transported them. It didn't matter if the student couldn't cut through the woods and the backyards and over a stream to get to that school. It didn't matter. Because they lived within that one-mile radius. Now, we're recognizing the fact that that student maybe still is not getting transported because maybe they don't live 1.5 miles away. Maybe now they only live 1.3 miles away. If they walk down the streets and go around the corner and they're not cutting through parking lots and things like that. And all we are... All this policy change does is say... Makes it crystal clear to families. And so that when people go onto Google Maps... And we get these calls all the time. People go onto Google Maps and they say, wait, I... You know, this says I live 1.5 miles. And we said, we measure as the crow flies. But I think the point is, we've done this. This is how it's always been done. And so if... And there wasn't anybody on this committee who said, we need a policy change because we want to transport more students. Everybody was happy with what we're doing. And if people are happy with what we're doing, then we need to change the words to match what we've been doing. That's all we're asking. If the committee says... You know, to tell you the truth, I don't think this has been working very well for us all these years. We want to change the policy and we want to transport more students, then that's the will of the committee. I don't know.
And I think that's where my point is. We've been talking about attendance being an issue and a barrier to kids getting to school. I think that we need to look at it to say, we should be transporting more students, not less students. And I know you're going to grandfather the kids in. And, you know, if you're already in transportation, it doesn't take into consideration other people that live in the same house or tenement or relatives or kids that are in pre-K, you know. At the end of the day, I don't see the need in this day and age with what we have going on that we should be just based on money. Just based on money. Because in my opinion, this is a straight money grab from the city saying that they don't want to pay the $750,000.
We didn't even...
So at this point, that's what I'm thinking.
I...
And I just... But we need to transport more kids based on the attendance, not less. And you're going to say, oh, well, they're going to grandfather them in. But I think we should be looking at, how do we either redraw the lines, which I've been saying for a long time?
Yes.
So that will eliminate some of the needs of this. We're taking all of this urgency towards, we have to do something here because of the $750,000 increase that it would come to the city versus, I would like to have that same urgency a year ago with change the lines, make sure the students are moving closer, stop this transportation from one side to the other, put programs in the places where that make more sense. But the urgency of this, in my mind, is due to money, not necessarily the best interest of kids. That's in my opinion. And I yield.
Okay. So it's... This keeps coming up, this idea that I was somehow like... Like my arm got twisted by the mayor or other people on the city side or something. And that this was like a, hey, you better change this policy because we don't want to spend an extra $750,000. It's not it. But we just finished a conversation about tiering. So it's on the heels of... I have a committee member who says, have you asked parents how they feel about the school start times? And then the next discussion we have is, have you thought about changing the start times so that we can be more efficient in tiering of the buses? If we're going to be more efficient in tiering of the buses, it is... It doesn't necessarily take anybody's, you know, like what parents want into consideration. It's literally a, how can we save money on buses? So now... And that doesn't change... What I'm proposing doesn't change the student or family experience. And what it does is just maintains what we're doing and it doesn't increase bus costs. Like, I honestly... So I'm upset because the narrative is that I... We're not taking kids... I'm looking to harm kids. I'm not taking the best interests of students in mind. If we didn't want to take the best interests of students in mind, I would come here and I would say, look, the state says we don't have to transport inside two miles. Let's not do that. And we'd do it... We wouldn't do it as the crow flies. We would be doing it walking distance. And that would... That would... Could that be in the best interests of kids? Maybe. Or maybe not. Because when we look at our data of our typical students who are transported versus not transported, we're not doing better with the transported students. It actually isn't... The data isn't better. They're chronically absent at a higher rate. Now... And that was a... You know, that was a question that came up at the subcommittee. We said, no, we really don't think it's better. We didn't think it was going to be worse. It is worse. The flip side of that is that people could say, okay, but if you transport less of them, it will get... It could get worse. But we're not asking to transport less kids. We're asking to transport the students that we've been transporting and not sub... Like substantively, we're not looking to change the policy. If we don't change the words, there will be a substantive change to the way we do business. And that will cost more money. I don't know else to say it.
What if a student is in a tenement house?
Yeah.
And they're grandfathered in on the first floor and their cousins live on the second and third floor? Are they grandfathered in?
No.
So we'll have one person getting transported from the same address because they're grandfathered in?
That happens already with hardships.
Right.
Right? We already do that for a number of families who, for one reason or another, they just can't get their students to school. And it doesn't matter if on the, you know, second and third floor, we are saying no to parents. We might be saying yes to the person on the first floor because they tell us, you know, a story. They let us know of their circumstances. And we will make arrangements to pick up that child. So we already do that, you know, across the city in different ways.
And we're not... That's a hardship. And I understand hardships. This is... A policy change is going to affect everybody in the house. And there's going to be more than hardships because people live together and live, you know, their neighbors. So the neighbor gets picked up for six, seven years because of the way we're doing it. So it's not... We're not going to... We're going to grandfather in the current people. But we're not going to grandfather in the same neighborhood, the same place with other people with transportation. That's my contention.
Yeah. And I did ask... So just so you know, in terms of like, kind of neighborhoods and people losing schools, I did... Losing transportation, I asked this question about kind of, what are we doing here over time? Like, how many kids? How many... Like, what does it look like after people get grandfathered out, right? My understanding is that over the next... If we think about a school like Henry Lord, a K to 8 school, nine grades, the student gets grandfathered in in kindergarten, and now we've got eight more years. As people age out, in the next eight years, it looks like we will be saving a bus. A bus. This isn't like... I can't stress this enough. This is not about making some long-term change that we're hoping is going to be our ticket to lowering transportation costs for the city. This is an attempt at maintaining our current practice. Because if we don't, we're going to actually transport more students to the tune of $750,000. And on the flip side, the equivalent of one bus could be, you know, 50 students that as we phase out over the next eight years, we might be able to save a bus. This is not aimed at hurting families, not aimed at hurting students. We don't anticipate that it's going to have a detrimental effect on our attendance based on the data that we're looking at in the rates of chronic absenteeism of students that we do transport already.
So my last question, comment on that. I haven't seen the data. You just say it tonight and share with us.
Sure. Yeah, I'll share. No, I didn't. We actually... I didn't see it until today.
I get it.
Yep.
What I would like to see the data is students chronically absent and we're transporting them all the way across the city.
We're going to make...
Please tell me the amount of time...
Yep.
Hold on. Please tell me the amount of times that a superintendent, because you're new, or a transportation coordinator or anybody in there that's actually told a student, we're transporting you all the way over there and you're not showing up to school? You're going to the school you had to be at. Please tell us as a committee how many times that's happened over the last five years. I know you don't have that number.
I know.
But I'm sure they can. Thank you. I yield.
Mr.... Let me go to Mr. Bailey first and Mr. Dias, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
I just had some comments with this. And Dr. Curley, this isn't a slight at anyone, so I just want you to say that.
Sure.
I do understand your frustration. And I'm on the same page. But I can talk on my own personal experiences, living in Fordney Street, walking to Morton, and then across the street, other students receiving rides on a bus. And just from that... And I didn't have the opportunity to look at the data. And it might not necessarily impact absenteeism. But I can tell you certainly it did impact the tardiness when we came to seasonality in those long winter months when you're walking to school. But also, and I don't think anyone has any type of malice intent on this board when it comes to this and when we're making these votes. And I'm probably going to vote no because I can remember my experiences and what that did. And I think an extra half a mile would definitely impact that. There's no easy answer to this. And the first thing I think of is, what is my role? And it's to make sure the kids get to school and make sure we protect the school... The kids while they're at school. So for me, I think that half a mile, tacking on that half a mile, and I know how costly it could be. But I just couldn't picture my kid walking an additional half a mile in the middle of the wintertime, whether it's the 1.3 miles or 1.5 miles. That's still a lot on families, whether they're grandfathered in or not. I just think it's tough. And like I said, I can remember my own experiences. I would like to see the data. And it's a very tough position to be in, right? Because we're looking at the money side, but we also want to make sure we're fiscally responsible and able to provide families what they need. So I yield.
Oh, Carl, next, then, Ms. Pereira.
Thank you. So I guess I'll start with my comments. I mean, you know, I'll say I've been personally told by either some members on the committee or otherwise, we should be... If I talk about either a different policy or whatnot and it's not directly related to students, I've been told we're here for the best interest of the students. And this policy, I don't think anyone could say this helps Fall River students. It just doesn't. It's just the facts. One question on the... Comment on the hardship. I did not know there were hardship waivers. I'm not even familiar with that. It's not mentioned in the policy, which is something I believe it should be mentioned. The policy hardships for transportation should be in this transportation policy. It just makes sense. I'm not fully... And I appreciate the efforts to explain where it's no longer has the crow flies, the circumference, the radius, it's now the actual distance. However, the half-mile offsets... Half-mile deductions in this policy or increases in this policy, I don't believe would offset the number. So I personally believe with the way the city is structured, it would still end up individuals losing... Students losing transportation. So I can't support that. And also, I believe the Fall River Public Schools should make every strive possible to increase transportation for students. And I believe what I'm about to say is relevant to this policy. There is a cost with transportation. And the big reason is because the state doesn't fully fund transportation. And underfunded transportation is, by the law, an unfunded... Not transportation, unfunded... Underfunded mandate is by law an unfunded mandate. And that's something this committee took a unanimous vote to support, funding an unfunded mandate petition. The city council will be taking it up tomorrow. And hopefully, that leads to more money coming in the district. There is a bill that this committee just voted to endorse that, in regard to transportation, that's been supported by the MTA. that's been supported by the MTA, believe it might even be supported by the MASC, that will bring, that will fund that, that unfunded mandate from the governor's budget to bring more money into the city, because the city does pay for transportation, to bring more money into the city to help taxpayers. This policy, going back to it, just doesn't help the students of Fall River, and that, so that's why I can't support it. I do have a few questions, um, not related to the distances, however, the special programs, we're adding, um, students assigned to special programs may, we're adding the word "may", qualify for transportation if the student is, if, they are, we're doing a lot of different things with this policy, attending a program which meets walking distance criteria. And there's also some changes to, um, special education transportation as well. Um, I was wondering if, um, Ms. Obenchain or someone can speak to how, or if anyone has the answer, can explain how this policy will change when it comes to special education transportation, if we approve it?
I'm not sure. Can you just read me the piece that you're referring to, so I can speak on it?
Sure, sure. I'll, I'll read the, um, the proposed updated language. Students, special education students may be eligible for transportation based on state regulations, which are not addressed by this trans, by this policy. The accommodations may, no, I'm sorry, I'm reading the, the crossed out version. Such transportation accommodations are determined as part of the team process. What's crossed out of here is the accommodation made for transportation for a student on an IEP would take precedence. So the way I read this policy, students who are on an IEP are no longer gonna take precedence in this policy, it's gonna be a part of the team process, and I'm just wondering who would determine that.
So I don't believe that that was the intention of what was crossed out, because the specialized transportation that is part of a child's IEP, that is part of the discussion through the team process, takes precedent over everything, it currently does that now. So, that is first. However, there's the other opportunity for kids to receive transportation if they attend a program that is outside of whatever the district's policy is on regular transportation. So for, for example, if I lived, um, outside of, say, the Spencer-Borden neighborhood, but my program was at Spencer-Borden, I would get transportation to that program as if, that's still considered regular transportation because my program is outside. What this new, the changes are saying is that if the program that your child's, the school your child's program in, is in, is within that 1.5, they may or may not get the specialized transportation. For example, if a child is in a wheelchair and requires a specialized vehicle, and they're still within that 1.5 miles, of course, they're going to get that. Otherwise, they attend a specialized program, maybe, I don't know, TANZI is their neighborhood school, Spencer-Borden is still within the walking ti, they can still, they could still be required to get to, to walk to school like a typical student at Spencer-Borden. Does that make sense?
It, it did. I, I mean, at the beginning, I support what, so, a student who's on an IEP, that will take precedence, is what you're saying?
Yes.
That is what's crossed out of this policy. That, I, I agree with what you're saying.
But I think that when we discussed it, Ms. Obenchain and I, I mean, she was part of the discussion.
Yep.
That the fact that it takes precedence is, it's, it's the law. So, it seemed like it was, like, more words than needed because it's, we, we know that to be true, parents know that to be true, if it's in the student's IEP, specialized transportation provided by, as an accommodation in the IEP, it stands. It doesn't matter if you live two blocks away, you will still get that transportation, it takes precedence over the policy.
Right, you can never deny that. That's the law.
No, I appreciate that. I just think that's something that should be stated within policy, because laws can change. I think that's also important to note as well. Again, for the other rea, but that's just, thank you, Ms. Obenchain, so, that's just, that was just, thank you for clarifying that, so, but for the other reasons involved, I, I can't support this policy, so I'd like to make a motion to grant leave to withdraw.
So.
So. Um, so I think, let me just, I wanna clarify, just to make sure I'm correct.
I'll have a second, give me a second from Mr. Agia.
Superintendent, just to make sure I'm correct. When you talk about the crow fly or whatever, we're talking about, if this is Durfee, we used to make a big circle around the school, and if you lived within a mile and a half of that school in this circle, you were in. But clearly...
You didn't, you would not get transportation if you lived inside the circle.
Correct, that's what I mean, you would not get transportation in this area. But, what we're doing is basically using more of a Google Maps with walking, where we know that just because I may live at the end of the circle, I may have to go all the way here to get to there. I wanna transport as many students as possible. I'm not somebody who cares how mu, necessarily cares how much we spend on transportation, honestly, if it's getting our, if it's getting our, our scholars to school. I think it's very interesting, the point you raised with the report, that it's not showing that.
I know.
Um, so I'm gonna ask, I, I know you've already said it, but I just wanna make sure I heard you clear, to clarify. Every student that is being transported to school now, if this policy changes, will still be transported to school now.
I, I will say this, unless they move.
Well, no, I mean, obviously where they're living, yes.
Right, but, but there's, I, yes, unless they move. I mean, that's what's written in the policy. Students who qualified for transportation in school year '25 remain housed at the same address and remain in the same school or program, will continue to be eligible for transportation.
How about the students next year, our new students? So in other words, what I'm, what I'm getting, what the point I'm getting at is, I know we're saying that we can grandfather the people in that are there now. What I wanna make sure is that we're not eliminating people who would've been transported the other, the other way, using different numbers. So if that's what we're doing, then that's not something I can support.
So that, that was the, um, that was, that was the piece where, where I was explaining that, because if you are, if you have always been kind of a straight shot to school, and your walking distance and the crow flies is gonna be the same thing. So we have a corridor, um, in terms of the way, say, the Henry Lord Community School is, um, where that neighborhood is, there's a, just a straight shot. And so, if we went a mile out as the crow flies, that ends up being a mi, like, a mile walking distance, give or take a little, if someone has to walk the straight shot and go around the block. The policy impacts that, could impact that particular neighborhood in a way that, that's the piece that I was saying, over the next eight years, as students aren't grandfathered in, in new kindergarten kids, there is a, a piece of the Henry Lord neighborhood that would be cut out from the transportation. And that's where the equivalent of, about one bus of students, that, over the next eight years, would, would not be getting transportation.
At the end of the day, it sounds to me like we're gonna be transporting less students, and that's not something I'm comfortable with, so with that, I yield. I don't think we need to close the motion and do it, I think we vote on the motion. We don't always have to do something different, we have a motion on the table, let's vote on it.
Yeah, I haven't spoken yet.
I guess, yeah, but I mean, we don't have to do whatever he's saying, we can allow people to vote on the motion. Yeah. With that, I yield.
Mr. Curly.
And so, um, at the policy subcommittee meeting, I mean, the language here clearly is, is, is a little bit, you know, back and forth, and, um, I don't believe there's one school board member up here that wants to take away any services from any student, period. Uh, I certainly don't. That being said, um, the reason why we forwarded this was for a greater discussion for the full board to be able to weigh in on. And I know that, uh, it was stated to me that the current practice says that no student currently transported will not be affected, which means that we will maintain the same level of service. Believe that a lot of this issue is rising to a head, because MSBA, back in the 90s, stipulated that we build all these schools. If MSBA stipulated that way back then, and now here we are today, in 2025, uh, with such a broad district, and if you look at Fall River on the map, it looks like a, it looks like a very slim triangle, there are really, the north-south points are quite far away from each other, the east-west points are not that far away from each other. And so, it's created a certain issue in our transportation costs. And our transportation costs, year to year to year, continually rise, it's consistent. And a way to rein that in, and I do believe that what Mr. Dias said before is, is, is a good idea. I think we need to engage in conversation with the state delegation in accordance to some of the concerns raised by the city council as well, so that we can just try to have some type of conferencing, or some type of new, modern direction over the cost of school transportation. Because I don't believe we're the only city affected by it, I think cities throughout the Commonwealth are affected by the rising costs of transportation. So we absolutely need to move in this direction, to have a broader discussion with those at the state delegation, to see what we can do for the, to pressure the MSBA, because that's where I think it sits. We need to pressure the MSBA to kick in and to help us out with our costs, because they're very, very high. And there's no way that we wanna take away or strip any services from students in any way, shape, or form. But I know that in this policy regarding policy 12-2, 12-8, excuse me, uh, that the current practice states that no student currently transported will not be affected by this policy, they will all still continue to ride the bus to school as they are now. Now, I know that there's some grandfathering in, and some modifications. My statements right now pointed at the MSBA, want to address what does the future look like as we grandfather students in, and will more students be hurt by this or helped by this? What will the MSBA tell us? Thank you, I yield.
Yeah, I, I gotta say something, I haven't talked, um, I have had extensive conversations with our, um, state delegation, and one of the first things they always ask me is, Fall River, you know, I keep telling them we're getting killed with the, um, transportation budget, and they say, "Well, Fall River transports more kids than they have to." And I keep telling them, you can't have, I remember when they gave me that Fonzieka design, they were gonna have kids walking from Durfee Street to Fonzieka, and I just remember that, I thought, "That's absolutely nuts, that's halfway across the city." I believe relief is on the way, I was talking last week with Adam Chapter Lane about it again. I, I'm hearing that at the State House, it's kinda risen to the top school transportation, and I want people to know that the problem we're having is because the kids in Fall River only, not the out-of-town kids in Westport Somerset, the kids in Fall River that are selected to go to Diamond have 95% of their transportation picked up this year. The kids in Durfee that enroll in our school get zero. I think the state is starting to focus on it with a laser beam, I'm really not opposed if we withdraw this. Um, I, I really don't know how, I got characterized as fighting over $750,000, it really never came up that way. We can wait, I do believe there's some relief coming in the budget right now, but let's, uh, I, I'm not panicking about this, it's, you know, it's obviously a lot of hard work these guys are doing to get as many kids to school. I am, the most upsetting thing I heard tonight was that the kids we're transporting are coming to school no better than the kids that are walking. That bothers me a little bit, and we gotta find out what that's about, but I'm not worried about that one. We can take a vote on the leave to withdraw, as far as I'm concerned, and go to the next one, is that okay?
Yeah.
One comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Agia.
I would agree with the mayor on the, uh, Durfee issue, I think we have to look long and hard. I've driven behind the sort of buses, it's just an equity thing, it's not fair, it's not right. Uh, sometimes those buses are packed, they're unsafe, I don't believe that we should be doing, we need to look into transporting some of the children at Durfee as well with buses, and it shouldn't be, if you go to Diamond, you get the yellow bus that'll pick you up, and then you have to pack yourself into a sort of bus. I just think we need to look at the whole picture, so, I'm in favor of studying it a little more, but the only question is if this passed, I think we would need to look at the bottom where it says students who qualified, I think you'd have to put families in there, so that we, we would capture, you know, younger, non-school-aged children. If it's not get leave to withdraw, I guess it's, but if it, if that fails, I think we should address the families.
All right. Let's hold, let's hold on this, withdraw it, yeah, we, yeah.
So, Mr. Agia made the motion?
No, Mr. Dias did, Mr. Agia seconded.
I mean, Mr. Dias made the motion.
So we're gonna sit on this a little while, but if I have to talk to Kenny, I will.
Was it seconded?
Yes.
By Mr. Agia.
Okay.
Leave to withdraw. Go ahead, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lyerby?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Yes. 12-9, is a discussion and vote to approve the proposed fiscal year '26 annual operating budget for the Fall River Schools, as presented by Dr. Tracy Curly.
So, we are recommending a vote to approve the proposed fiscal year '20-'26 annual budget of the Fall River Public Schools totaling $198,837,210. This budget represents the operating budget for the Fall River Public Schools and does not include transportation.
Motion to approve?
Second with a comment, question.
We have the motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second with a comment.
I have a second, Mr. Dias.
Thank you, um, wish to, per our last conversations, I'm gonna bring these back up and potentially make amendments. Um, first is on the SRO program, and I did go through the indirect costs, and the summary, I, in my opinion, doesn't really match the language, so in the summary, the school resource officers are paid through the school operating budget. However, out, just my opinion, my, my, my legalese is that this should be something that's paid for through the city. And I, I'm also curious as, as to whether that would cover potential overtime, um, the SROs recently received, and I'm not questioning the validity of it, or questioning whether it was deserved or not, but they received a reclassification for detectives that would give them a 5%, I believe a 5% increase in their pay, which is something I don't even believe is covered within our budget, unless you tell me otherwise, and I believe that's something that should just be, that's something that took place through a collective bargaining agreement between the city and the police department that had absolutely no representation from the Fall River Public Schools. We should have a saying where our dollars go, I'd like to hear from you, your opinion on that, Ms. Almeida.
I, right now, I have $800,000 budgeted for SROs for next year. Uh, this year, they're gonna spend, uh, with everything, looking, moving forward, it's gonna spend, we're gonna spend about $785,000 for this year, so it will be very tight within the $800,000 for next year.
Okay, um, and you're familiar with this indirect cost agreement?
Yes.
Okay. And this is from FY 2017, and I don't know who would be able to chime in on this, however, dispute resolution, I'm, I believe as one member, the city should be paying for this. And just reading the language in regards to dispute resolution, "Should disagreement exist between the city and school officials on any provision within this agreement, the dispute shall be presented to the superintendent of schools and the city administrator to determine the appropriate allocation mythology. Should the city superintendent and city administrator not reach agreement, they shall so notify and seek the assistance of the Department of Education and Department of Revenue in accordance with Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations." Mayor, I'm not, um, I'm genuinely curious, um, who would, if we, if the school committee voted to dispute language in here, who on the city's side is the acting city administrator? I'm not trying to, trying to catch you off guard.
I don't have one right now, I'd probably have to do it myself.
Okay. Um, I would like to make a motion, we instruct the superintendent to engage in deliberations with the city administrator pursuant to Section 12 of the indirect cost agreement, to potentially save money on the SRO program and, and to move that program to the city.
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
Comment.
Mr. Agia.
So, I think it's, it's a valid discussion to have, you know, relative to the SROs, I think it's important that we have school resource officers, uh, I've always advocated for that, where I think we're not as intentional with how, how it's paid, where it's paid, and the overtime, as I emailed earlier, you know, I believe, several years ago, we were just told, we were thrown a bill and said, when we had no money, oh, we got $23,000 in overtime, prior to Dr. Curly. We amended the contract and the agreement to say superintendent has to approve all overtime. That's not happening right now. So, we got people come up to the podium last week and saying, "Oh, yes, it is." I've asked six times already, it's not happening. So, that part of the policy's not happening, but the piece of how much money we're paying needs to be addressed, Ms. Almeida, because as Mr. Dias just mentioned, these are contractual obligations, or whatever, they gave you a number for the current, the current year. They must've given you a number where you came up with the, I don't remember what I have in front of me, this $800,000? You know, is that the number for the current year, or is this the?
It's a placeholder for next year.
For next year, so, looking at that same theory in the current year, you were given numbers from the police department at the start of the year. Since then, there's been contractual increases, which I would've hoped was included, but then it's also, from what we're understanding, is that they got promoted to detectives, which is another percentage, but that affects how much money you have.
Correct.
And, nothing in here says that we're gonna pay whatever they decide to just keep giving raises. So that's where I think some scrutiny needs to happen from you and Dr. Curly to say what that is. The overtime, I've asked for a breakdown of the overtime along with the signed copies of, or approvals, what is that for? I don't know, but it's $100,000. It's not just a, a blank ticket to say, "We're paying for SROs, they tell us what it is, and we just pay the bill." We have to push back a little bit. Uh, I think the piece of this motion is, the mayor and the city are only paying 100% of net school spending, and whether we pay it or they pay it, I, I, you know, I think if the city had to pay, they're gonna use that as part of net school spending.
Correct.
And, they're rightfully so, to do that, it's basically a wash, if we really scrutinize the numbers to make sure that we're not just paying outside of their agreement. Uh, so, I, I don't think we necessarily need to go down the road of pushing this in, but the gentleman's point is well taken. He's reading from a report from 2017. The agreement between us and the city is 2017. Three superintendents ago, I've been asking at this meeting to have meetings to say, "Please review the end of the year," correct?
Yeah, no, it's right.
We haven't said it. It's about time we read and go over the indirect cost agreement to make sure things are being done appropriately, fairly, and the like, so, I'm gonna withdraw my second on this, but please consider Dr. Curly. So, I'm gonna withdraw my second on this, but please consider Dr. Curley having that indirect cost agreement discussion once and for all. Thank you, I yield.
So, wait, wait, hold, hold. So, there's no second to this motion to withdraw the money?
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'm sorry?
I.
Oh, now you're withdrawing one. Okay. Next thing, Mr. Dias, go ahead, give it a ride, buddy.
Thank you.
You're gonna have a job.
Appreciate it. So, with Michael Joyce, this, taking in some of the comments from my colleagues at the last meeting, I'm just gonna make a motion that this administration pursue a retainer contract for Michael Joyce and his law firm and report back on the findings. We're spending two hundred thousand dollars, mostly just to one individual. We should have a contract in writing, as Mr. Aggar pointed before. What's the direct expenses per attorney? And potentially put them on a retainer. I think that would help alleviate the costs and not disrupt any of the services.
Second, question?
Here we go. Go ahead, Kevin.
So, one of the general comments to the budget is, I think it's premature to pass the budget tonight. And the reason is, Mr. Dias just asked a question related to a contract. Since we had our budget hearing, we, as school committee, the public, teachers, staff have asked questions relative to whatever the discussion was at our budget hearing. I don't believe that we've sufficiently received information back that we've requested or recommended changes to the actual budget from the administration. So, I think it's premature to do this now and ask these questions before we get the information. To this point he just made about Michael Joyce, I asked at the last meeting for information relative to whether we're paying Michael Joyce the same fee as we're paying a new attorney that comes in, as an example. Wasn't a major thing, you could have found that out in a ten-minute conversation. This committee never received any information at all related to that particular item. So, therefore, it's still an issue. I have a whole slew of other issues that I have, that I would wanna ask questions for, but I think it's prudent to have this table till the next meeting and have the superintendent issue any kind of moves that staff wanted to make, she wanted to make, relative to questions we had, or things that the principals had. We had principals sit up here that didn't even know whether what they got was approved or not approved, they might have made a different decision in the budget. So, before we approve all these line items, I think we should take a pause, table this till the next meeting, so we're not sitting here asking similar questions. The number is the number, we're not getting any difference, so there's no change in the number. I don't think it, does anybody any problem to table this to the next meeting where we can get some answers to the questions, any changes that are gonna be made. So, when we approve it, we're approving it with all those changes in it.
Motion tabled, twelve, nine, ten, and eleven.
Huh?
There is a motion. It was.
I believe a motion table would take precedent.
There's already a motion.
If somebody wants to take the session, we have.
Yeah, I think, okay, hold on. Hold on. What's the first motion?
It was, first motion was vote to approve.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve.
Shelley, Shelley made the motion, and Mr. Dias seconded that.
Okay. Mr. Dias seconded the motion.
And then Mr. Dias made a recent motion to put Michael Joyce on a retainer, and Mr. Aggar seconded that one.
Motion tabled?
Yes.
Okay, so let's vote on the motion to table. I mean, I don't think we should be tabling this, we've already done.
Boy, department drinker, I believe a motion to table, we can have discussion.
Okay. Go ahead, Deb, call the roll.
I'm sorry, did you second?
Kevin, Kevin seconded it.
Yes.
That's the.
Mr. Aggar?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. LaRavia?
No.
Ms. Pereira?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Motion, now, let's go to the motion to approve. Deb, Mr. Aggar.
I'm not sure what the, we're approving a budget, I think we can ask questions.
I know, but.
No, I just understand, I just was wondering why you have to sigh about it.
I just.
So, can someone please answer the question Mr. Dias asked about Michael Joyce and the contract? What's in the budget? Is the contract in the budget? Do we have any of the information that was requested?
We have the ability to, we definitely have two hundred thousand dollars in the budget to pay for next year, if it so requires. The amount may be less, it all depends on the cases and items that come up on a yearly basis.
Well, how about the breakdown that was requested? The breakdown was how many for, you know, roughly for special education, how many were paid to him directly, to other lawyer, you know, there's, nobody's denying that this question was asked, right, at the budget hearing?
When the, yes.
The question was asked, I haven't had a chance to get it to you.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to make a point, because a lot of eyes are rolling.
So, just, let's be, let's be clear. We've had an internet issue, we've had a technology issue for the last month, and I have not been able, I have not had full access to the system as I normally do. So, there are things that I have not been able to get to in the past.
I totally understand. I made a motion to table, so you'd have, now that the internet's up, another month to deal with it. And it's not gonna change the number. But everybody wants to just rush this through. So, if we're gonna rush it through, I have a legitimate question. What is the situation?
I don't have that on me.
Dr. Curley, do you have?
What is the situation with?
We have a line item that says we're gonna pay Michael Joyce only. There's been suggestions to say, well, how is that, what is the current amount, is it, how much is being paid, how much is not to him, various things. Because we heard, somebody came up to the podium the other day and said, we have multiple attorneys that come up.
Right, that it's not to one person.
What is the contract that we have with a person making that much money for how much each individual gets? What does the contract say?
I have not seen a contract with Michael Joyce, or like with that law firm.
Right. And you've said that before. And we've said, we need a contract. But now we're gonna pass a budget that's approving a major expense to an attorney without a contract. That doesn't make any sense.
Is, is, I don't have the budget book in front of me, is that law firm named in our budget?
No.
No, it is for legal expenses, and not for a particular contract. So, I think this offers this, if we understand how much we've been paying for our legal expenses, I think we responsibly budget for that, and then we can pursue a contract with Michael Joyce and/or other firms. We can make the request that we put him on retainer and move forward from there. But I don't think that we have to hold up the budget because we don't have a copy of a contract that actually isn't itemized in the budget.
So, when we are gonna take a vote, usually you need information to do that. One of those times is to ask questions at the budget presentation.
I understand.
When we ask those questions, was to try to determine whether that number is sufficient or appropriate. If that number is, we're paying every attorney the top rate that he was getting, three, four hundred dollars an hour, it would, it would tell us that we should be able to lower it. But if we ask for the information, and then we don't get the information, which I understand, Mr. Almeida's point about the internet, but now we're passing an actual budget where these things are gonna get solidified. All I'm suggesting is that we, instead of doing that, we can take a month, get some questions answered, get some requests that we've asked for submitted, rather than have to go through this budget and do our due diligence as school committee members to ask these questions.
I understand that, I just think that there are, this is one line item. There are other places in the budget where, based on past experience, we identify and we put a placeholder in for how much money we think that particular service or something is going to cost, whether it shows up in some places as just contracted services and things like that. And we base that on experience. Not everything in the contract, not everything in the budget is based on a particular contract with an individual or an organization or company or whatever it is. It's the same thing that we do with, say, staffing agencies. We don't name the staffing agencies, we know based on our past experiences how much money we might need to put aside for them, but they're, but they're not attached to a person or a contract, and we're not holding, I guess my confusion is, holding up our budget because we don't, we haven't seen Michael Joyce's contract versus, we're not holding it up for other contracted services, we're not holding it up for curriculum materials and things like that, or professional development, even though we're still, we're just, we built it based on past practice, and some of the costs that we know are actual costs and that we have contracted, but some of it is just, it's out there as.
I don't, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying on Michael Joyce's contract. What I'm just making a point is, we've asked for information, and many line items, not just this.
I understand.
Even the principals, if they were being honest.
I think the principals were honest.
I do think they were honest. But I said, now, if they were being honest again, I think they might wanna change some of what they presented to us, based on the PowerPoint presentations that I was reading. I don't know, because I don't get a chance to talk to them.
But that was by the choice of this committee to not have people do presentations.
No, I'm talking about the presentation that was here.
Okay.
So, I read them, I read all the presentations. What I'm trying to say is that this is, there's more questions than just Michael Joyce in the, the reason why I think we should move it. But the committee's gonna vote, and if people on the committee don't wanna scrutinize the budget and the line items, that's up to them. But part of what my job is, is to ask these questions. So, I'll move on to the next question. Can you tell me in the budget, how many leads? Mr. Michon mentioned this earlier today. How many leads and what are the leads? And I asked for this information over the weekend or whatever in preparation for this. How many leads do we actually have in the school system?
In total?
Yeah.
We have seventy-two educational leads. We have three leads in facilities, and then we have our senior custodians as well.
And no other leads in the whole department?
No.
Do you concur with that, Dr. Curley?
No, I, yeah.
So, we've said in the past that we were gonna reduce the leads based on the budget, and I wanna make a motion that we reduce all leads in the budget, which is what we all agreed to in the past. So, the motion is to reduce all leads from the budget.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Comment.
You still have the floor?
Sure. So, the reason why I'm saying that is, we voted, everyone agreed to cut the educational leads, as Mr. Michon just mentioned. So, we're gonna cut the leads in the school department that are related to education and the education of the students. But we're gonna leave other leads to supervise two or three people to organize some work or whatever it is. It just doesn't make sense at all, in any way, shape, or form, to do that, that we're gonna cut all the instructional leads, but we're gonna leave other leads in the department. Just doesn't make any sense. We said this before, we were all in, I believe, agreement on it. Now, everybody's starting to question. This motion is to remove all leads based on the budget from this particular budget.
Are you done?
Yes, I yield.
Mr. Corey?
Madam Superintendent, are you comfortable with that request in the way that you structured, you know, our instructional setup for this, for the entire system?
So, I think that the, the motion goes beyond the instructional pieces, and still within FREA includes lead service providers and things like that. I'll say, I'm not, we hadn't, I know about what the discussions look like, I know that the vote, the vote that was taken, the discussion that was had, was specific to instructional leads. I would need a little bit more time to think about what that looks like in terms of those other lead positions, lead service providers, and leads in other departments as well.
So, I realize that this request was brought up in the past, but at this juncture, you're still not comfortable with settling on that idea yet, is that correct?
Um, no, I don't think, no, I'm not today.
Mr. Almeida, as far as the budget is concerned, you've been able to meet your end-of-the-year reports dutifully each year. Is that so?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, and before I, before I close my argument on the leads position, 'cause it morphed into that, I wanna go back to Attorney Joyce. In the last meeting we had last month, in the special meeting we had, I remember that Ms. Openchain, who's an expert in special ed law, came up to the podium to explain just how powerful and potent Mr. Joyce has been for our school department over many years, and that his judgments have, even though he's an expensive lawyer, his judgments have saved us and saved our backs on so many cases in the past. And there was one case I was intimately involved in on behalf, and I was very impressed in the manner that his law firm handled our legal issue at that point. So, I don't understand why Mr. Joyce's name is being brought up here to scrutinize the budget. And educational leads right now, our superintendent, who's an instructional leader, is uncomfortable with that request right now. So, I'm gonna trust my superintendent and my special ed director, and I'm gonna say that I approve of whatever it is Mr. Joyce is in our line item in the budget. I'm gonna approve that, and I'm gonna approve what Madam Superintendent says about our instructional leads at this juncture. If that's a case for scrutiny moving forward in the future, I say we have high-level discussions before we just give an umbrella vote on leads right here in front of the public. With that, I yield.
Mr. Bailey?
All right, so a few things. If we all voted to get rid of the leads, I think that's something we should really take a strong look at. If the superintendent is not comfortable with it, and she's saying she needs more time, I also think we should offer her more time to look at these things. Yes, she is a professional, but if we made the decision, I think we really need to take a look at that as well and see what it looks like. And yes, she is a professional in what she does. So, I would like to offer her some more time and maybe put this on the next agenda, next month's agenda, for some discussion that we can, you know, talk about this a little bit further. Because I don't think she agreed to keep him on or not, but I did feel like there was a little bit confusion on her side on whether she should look at it, so.
Motion tabled?
I'll second that, but, Mr. Aggar. What's our motion on the table?
Wait, 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 what are we tabling?
I withdraw my motion. I withdraw my motion.
Mr. Chairman?
What, Mr. Aggar?
Yeah, just to clarify on the leads, so, this isn't a controversial piece between superintendent and I, I wanna make sure that that's very clear to everyone. So, we, as a body, have already determined that we are cutting the instructional leads. We've already determined that, as a body unanimously.
Teacher leaders over the next two years.
Teacher leaders over the next two years, because it said they were in there and there was some language. We already decided to cut all of them. Mr. Michon's comment was, I don't think anybody told them or whatever, but they don't necessarily need to, but that's a different story. But I want the committee to understand that we have already decided to cut instructional leads out of the budget, given in two years. Half of them are already gone, the rest are gonna go next time. At the same time as in this budget that we're approving, for instance, I think you said we had, where, where were the other leads?
Seventy-two.
No, no, where, where else, besides, we already, those seventy-two are cut.
We have, we have leads in facilities as well. We have leads in facilities as well.
How many?
We have three, three leads in facilities, and we have our seniors too.
So, we have three leads in this, in the maintenance department. We are cutting, and we already voted to cut all the instructional leads, but we're not gonna cut the three leads in the maintenance department, and that's not consistent. That's the point I'm making here, and this is a budgetary issue. That's why I'm saying, the superintendent mentioned lead service providers, which is sort of a different category in my mind. So, I think we need to clarify for her, so that it makes sense to, what is the will of the committee when we decided to cut instructional leads? Wasn't to leave, only target the FREA in instruction, because that would not make any sense whatsoever. So, what I'm suggesting is we cut the other leads, not the lead service providers, which is a bigger position. This is a small stipend that basically is just given to people to lead in a small way. So, if it's, are you saying it's only maintenance?
So, does it include the, does it include senior custodians in their buildings who supervise that one other person?
No, the senior custodians is a different, that's not a lead. No, the senior custodians are, is a different, that's not a lead. This is a lead like you're going to, if I'm an electrician and there's three people working under me, I'm the lead, I do a little stuff, you know, but we have layers of administration over them that also do that. So, why are we going to say, we can have an electrician, and I don't even know what the amount is, make five or six thousand dollars more to lead two other people and get their work orders out, but meanwhile, we're cutting seventy-two instructional leads when instruction should be the main focus of the district? In our infinite wisdom, we all said, let's cut the seventy-two leads because we don't have the money to do all of these things. All I'm saying is we need to cut the other ones. I think it makes sense. So, I'll make the motion that we cut the three leads, and is there any others other than that?
No.
The three leads in maintenance. So, that's much more clear what exactly that we're cutting. Second.
Mr. Larry?
So, I, I think when we discuss, I agree, we cut the seventy-two, we were all in agreement, but I, I think we're speaking apples and oranges right now. We're talking instructional positions, and we're talking maintenance positions. I, I think if the superintendent didn't bring forth, hey, we're gonna cut all leads, there was probably a reason. So, I guess my ask is, is there a reason why we didn't include all leads? I don't know if Mr. Pacheco wants to come up and, and discuss anything, but is there a reason why we didn't make them, um, pull them in altogether? All leads altogether? Facilities, operations, maintenance, whatever it may be? Is there a reason?
Superintendent?
Anybody?
Do we not, why didn't we bundle them all?
Why didn't we bundle?
The, it came up during, you know, our discussions around, um, it came up in discussions specific to FREA negotiations. I mean, that's, that's how it came up, and then, um, I don't know how much I'm supposed to say about executive session. So, that's where the vote was. That, that, um, the vote, we, there was a vote to, um, cut instructional leads with the provision that it would happen over two years. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia?
Can I just ask the superintendent, what is your, in what we just presented? So, we voted to cut the seventy-two leads, everyone knows it, in fact, everybody, including you and your administration, said it.
Yep.
What is your feeling on keeping consistent so that we don't just cut and target the instructional people to cut, that we cut the three maintenance individuals?
So, I think that, yeah. So, I think that I and members of my team came forward, um, in those discussions, and we were able to discuss that because there are, like, multiple people on our, um, team who have, you know, kind of firsthand knowledge, who have experience, um, working, you know, with the leads, through the leads, and felt very comfortable talking about, like, how we would, um, what we would do to support teachers in schools outside of those stipended instructional lead positions, using coaching, using the department chairs, et cetera, et cetera, and felt like that was a way to, um, so that we wouldn't be in a position to, you know, make, um, cuts of full, full-time positions. That was a way that we could offer something to all of the, you know, Unit A peoples, you know, in terms of negotiated COLA and stuff like that. We didn't, we didn't have, there wasn't a discussion about what that would look like on, um, you know, that, and it was, that was specific to Unit A when we were having that discussion. It afterwards came up, and there have been some questions, you know, in the last few weeks, like, hey, does that mean, does that mean related service providers? We've talked about the fact that, you know, should it be, um, in, you know, some of the facilities departments, but it wasn't a, we didn't have a discussion, like we are right now, that says like, hey, we have all of these leads across the district, and we said, yeah, let's just cut the instructional ones. We just, we, we didn't have, we haven't had a, a deep look, a deep discussion. I will be honest in saying, I'm not, I don't know what the, the backup plan is. We knew what the backup plan was in terms of those instructional leads. I don't know what the backup plan would be in terms of if we cut, you know, three maintenance leads, then who else would do the thing that they do? I'm not sure.
Right, so, we're having that discussion now, that's why.
Yeah, so if someone wants to.
So, at the end of the day, we just have to make a value judgment.
But, it's not a value judgment, because, like, I'll say this, like, I've had the conversation about the related service providers, I've met with the lead-related service providers, I've met with, uh, Ms. Obenchain, we've talked about what that would look like, could look like, so we have a better handle on that. We haven't had the discussion about who does what if we don't have leads in maintenance. So, that's, that, that feels very different.
Right.
So, but it's not a value thing, it's not like.
No, I, what I'm saying value means, I'm just using a comparison, I guess, maybe values, but, not a good word. If we, as administration, you included, all voted to remove the instructional leads, at the same time the discussion was had in executive session, that says, all lead, we're gonna be consistent, if we're gonna do this, the, you know, the instructional leads, we have to do it with all. Now, we didn't take a vote or anything like that. The time to take that vote is now, based on the budget. So, in my opinion, I'm just asking, if you're, are you comfortable with saying, we cut seventy-two instructional leads, but we're gonna leave three maintenance leads? If that's what you're saying?
I would, I would appreciate a similar discussion as we had around the leads, because we did, we did discuss what that would look like, and how, what does it look like in a school if we don't have the leads, and who would do what? I don't remember having that same conversation about the other leads. I, I do remember, A, are we really gonna cut the instructional leads and leave the other leads? I think we should cut them all. I just didn't remember, like, the conversation, so that's, I'm asking for that.
I understand, I'm just trying to say that, because it's the time now on the budget. At the end of the day, you can get to the late lead job descriptions, you can see what it is, I can send you plenty of information from the prior superintendent when these were created, relative to what they actually do, and how they're selected and all this other stuff, but at the end of the day, I just feel like we should be consistent. We cut the instructional leads, we shouldn't leave any equivalent type of leads in the district, whether it's maintenance or any other department. I yield.
I, I, I have to say something. Kenny, are these guys, are these, are these leads in the contract?
They are.
They are in the contract, okay.
So, I, I mean, I, my two cents worth, just plain and simple. The conversations we're having here, we have behind closed doors, so I'm not sure where I'm gonna stop.
Right.
So, somebody stop me if I go too deep into something, because this is behind the closed doors items. These were all talked about behind closed doors. And I mentioned, behind closed doors, that if you're gonna cut, then cut it all. Cut the seniors. Cut everybody. If we're not gonna have any layers between a director, if you're not gonna have any layers between a director and your rank and file, then you're not gonna have any. But, you shouldn't be targeting one group over another, 'cause that's all this says.
Okay.
Plain and simple. That's my two cents.
All right, so we have a vote to eliminate, uh, those three, we have a motion, a second on the elimination of those three?
Mr. Agia made the motion, I don't know who seconded it.
Mr. Dias.
Yes.
Mr. Dias, yeah. Uh, I, like I said, I'm not, I'm not supporting that, we have contractual obligations, we're gonna fulfill them. Mr. Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Cabral, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Lowery?
No.
Ms. Pereira?
No.
Mary Kugan?
No, no.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias?
Are you, um, can we still have discussion on the overall budget? I still had more questions and comments. Usually, if this was a city, if this was a city council meeting, the council president would allow any individual to ask all the questions they want.
Well, that's why we had the budget hearings, but that's okay, go again.
You asked the questions.
Yeah, we had, we had all those budget hearings, and that's what you're supposed to ask them, but now when you go into.
Oh, I asked plenty, I have followed up.
No, but we're at final approval now, and you're gonna bring up everything under the sun. That's why I told you.
I, I, I didn't, are we, we're on a time constraint? Is there a time constraint?
I'm leaving at ten, I don't know how long I'll stay in tonight.
Okay.
Well, let's go.
Thank you, so.
Just so everybody knows that.
If I may speak uninterrupted, if you don't mind. So, next item I wish to bring up is the MASC. This organization, in my opinion, does not support the authority of the school committee as it relates to oversight. Their suggested policies offer, in my opinion, misguidance. I think it's just a waste of money and a budget just to even be a part of them. We can make our own policies. So, I make a motion, we withdraw from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees.
Hold on, do we, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Mr. Corey?
Mr. Chairman, even, even to entertain a motion like that is just, it's, it's just, I don't know, it, it just came from left field.
Yeah.
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Agia?
Yeah, the reason why I second it is, I do think we need to take a hard look at some of the things that we're paying money for, even if it's, you know, ten thousand here, fifteen thousand there, it is very important to look at each of those line items. I was disappointed in AMSC, how they represented us or tried to represent us. I don't think they were transparent with the processes that we hired them for. Definitely something that we need to look at. I've said the same thing about board docs, which is also an MASC-funded, uh, system that we spent fifteen thousand dollars for, that is not suitable for what we need. We could be doing that for zero. So, I do think that we need to look at all of these particular items. I'm gonna withdraw my second from this, but we do need to actually look at these things as a body, to determine where we're gonna go. So, when the contracts come up, as you've promised or told us, a month or two before, they're gonna get presented to us. So, before we just pay a bill, I've asked before, just come before us so we can have a discussion at the proper time when the contracts are up. Thank you, I yield. I withdraw my motion, my second.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you. Mr. Corey has his hand up first, so he had it up before me, if you wanna recognize him first, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna be polite.
I don't really care, Mr. Corey?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, uh, why don't we just throw out the regulations and, and let them rewrite it? I yield.
All right, Mr. Chair. Thank you, just two more items I wanted to bring up. First, I have one idea when it comes to facilities that we could potentially rein into spending, and I think I mentioned this at an earlier meeting, we do spend a lot on outsourcing vehicles for repair. Why don't we just do it in-house? How much money, how much money have we saved in the past when we had an in-house garage to, um, to now when we outsource the vehicles? Do we have an estimate?
I couldn't tell you, Mr. Dias.
Just an idea. Last thing I want to mention, and the last time I brought this up, I believe, um, everyone thought I was making a joke when I mentioned it, however, I believe as a school committee, we should be leading by example. When we go into our closed-door meetings, we have these, a packet of these big sandwiches, gourmet sandwiches, and half of them go to waste, and we should not be spending money on those items.
Okay, I told.
And if, if I could continue, I believe a colleague of mine asked for this to be, can be, asked for this to be on the agenda for a future meeting, so I'd like to make a motion, we cut the sandwiches out of the budget.
Do I have a second on that, the gourmet sandwich removal for forty bucks a minute? Do we have a motion? A second, I'm sorry.
There is a motion.
No, just a comment.
I know, I know.
Right, it's nine o'clock.
Okay.
Nine o'clock.
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. Just a comment, Mr. Chair. I don't believe that's even a budget line item, so whoever autism internally, we can just say we're not doing it.
Let's spend another half hour on that. Are you done? You said two items, you're done?
Those, yeah, I guess there's no second, however, it is, it is a, an item, line item in the budget, I believe is under, um, correct me if I'm wrong, it's under school committees? It's under school committees, there is a line item in the budget for the sandwiches. Again, we need to be leading by example as a committee. If we're gonna be cutting things, we should be leading by example as well, we should not be spending money on silly sandwiches, we should bring our own lunch. That's my opinion, as one member.
Stop, 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 that's enough.
I can't hit it.
Okay, we're done, we're done. We have a motion and a second on approving the budget, do we have anything else? Mr. Agia?
I have one question, Mr. Uh, I think you mentioned this before that, there is no dollars in the current budget for prepaid tuitions or anything like that.
No.
And in this budget is that every line item, that everything contractual, everything is all included in this document here?
To my, to my knowledge, yes.
To my know, without any prepaid tuitions or anything like that?
Yes.
Thank you, I yield.
Deb, call the roll, please, on, um.
Voting to approve the budget?
Yes.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Objection.
No, 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 no.
No, just say, yeah.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
You said no.
Yes.
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mary Kugan?
Yes, item number, I think it's twelve-ten.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed transportation line item with the addition of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Seven hundred and fifty?
Thousand dollars, yep. That's based on, that's based on.
I thought we were gonna wait on that and.
Well, I think we can make this.
See what we got for money.
The problem is, is that under the current situation, we don't, we'd be over budget by seven hundred and fifty thousand, basically. So, I think at this point, we should make that motion if between now and whenever that transportation, um, system can absorb the savings. I, I just think truth and advertising, we need to add.
I'll give you truth and advertising. I don't wanna go over a hundred percent again this year, though, Mr. Almeida on that, okay? Like we did a couple of years ago, we'll go back and talk to you about, but I'm not gonna, if we can pull this out where I think, where I think we might get it, okay?
Say that again?
I don't wanna go over a hundred percent, okay?
I understand.
All right, go ahead. Call the roll.
No, hold on, I'm still asking the question.
Oh, okay.
What the heck is he talking about?
I just don't wanna get.
Ms. Almeida, please.
I think we have money coming from another source, is what I'm saying.
No, I get it, I understand.
I was waiting for that, but that's okay.
But, the thing is, we can't, and I believe you would agree, Mr. Almeida, if the current projected amount, based on the situation that we have for transportation, is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than the number that's here, we should approve seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars more, otherwise, we're approving a deficit budget.
For what we know at the moment, yes.
Right, go ahead.
So, what we know at the moment, what is this thing about a hundred, not going over a hundred percent, I don't know what that means.
I wanna stay.
Transportation has nothing to do with a hundred percent in that school spending.
I understand.
Mr. Almeida?
Correct. I know it doesn't, it's city.
Mr. Almeida?
That is correct.
It's a city expense.
So, when the mayor's telling you something about a hundred percent, is there some sort of side deal or something he's talking about?
Yeah, that's what it is.
What is it?
There is not.
Can we let our colleague speak, please?
Do you understand what I'm asking?
I do.
And does, what he said about a hundred percent of transportation make any sense at all?
No, no.
No. We need the seven hundred and fifty thousand.
We need seven fifty, as of what we know now.
With what we know right now.
Thank you, sir. I yield.
Call the roll, Deb. Call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Please.
To approve the transportation budget with seven hundred, with an additional.
Putting the extra seven fifty in transportation.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mary Kugan?
Yes, twelve-ten, vote to refer the fiscal year annual budget of the four public schools to the mayor for approval.
Motion?
Second. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that one? Deb, give it a call.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Might as well stay at twelve-twelve, discussion and vote to approve the request for usage of the Morton Middle School for the South Coast Rail, as presented by Ken Pacheco.
So moved.
Second, with a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I'm not sure if you saw my email, Mr. Pacheco, however, I'm not, I don't have the, I know we discussed this policy at a previous meeting, I don't have it in front of me today. However, we are approving the request for South Coast Rail to come to Morton Middle School, which I fully support. Plenty of issues with the MBTA that need to be discussed by the community. Fully support doing that. However, they already have, if we're voting to approve it, how would the MBTA already have the date out for...
They asked for a date. And again, this is the closest meeting since they've asked, so this is the only meeting that I had an option to do with him.
So they, they never received approval?
No.
So they're, okay, so they're putting out a date, they never received approval, so they, MBTA shouldn't be doing that, they should be waiting until we get approval of this committee. But thank you.
If the vote is no, then I'll give them that answer tomorrow morning.
Sure. No, I'll be voting yes, very important. However, I already, I don't understand what's funny. So MBTA put out...
They're trying to get people to go. You've been talking all night about getting more people to go, they wanted to start it earlier. If it's no, they cancel. No big deal.
I yield.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia.
I'm in favor of this, for sure, but the, I think there's a second page that talks about indemnity or whatever. Does this, what aligns with our policy? Because there was an issue before about the policy, is just a letter enough to suffice?
From agencies such as ourself, that's all we give. So when someone asks us for that letter, that's what we give them, a letter. We're self-insured, so the government is the same way. It's what we got from the congressman. It's the exact same letter that we would get from the state for anything they would do for us.
I don't, I don't disagree, I just think that we should look at the policy, the way it's worded, I think it makes it look like it's a policy, you know, like they're going to get one from outside?
Sure.
Which is sort of going to prohibit us from having those things. But it's, the policy doesn't say this, is what I'm saying.
We do have agencies that use our buildings that don't have policies also.
I don't disagree, I'm just saying, I think we should clarify. I'm in favor, thank you.
All right. Mr. Corey?
I just have a comment. I just want to, I think it's great that we could show partnership with the MBTA on this, especially for Ms. Fox, who's the director, for public engagement to know that they just moved into Fall River and they have a partner in the fall of the public schools. That, to me, is good enough, I yield.
All right, let's call the roll on that one, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay, so we have two that we didn't clean up on the front, twelve-six, discussion and vote to refer the school committee policy, formal objection to the policy subcommittee is presented by Colin Dias, school committee man. Mr. Dias?
Yes, I, we didn't have the full membership, and I gave my comments from the last meeting, so just to reiterate, if I can just talk about the two together, no objection to that. The objection policy is just codifying the city charter language, which applies to the city council, just basically codifying that language into a policy that could be equally applied for the school committee. What's good for the goose is good for the gander, in my opinion. City council can have that policy, so could we, so it also clarifies robber rules as well. The access to information policy, I think it's something that we should all just get behind. I don't even think it's controversial whatsoever, and I think it's also some sort of compromise policy, differing opinions. So the policy would give, codify an individual member's right to request information. We've had disputes over information requests being too volumous and/or not necessary, and it provides due process. It allows the superintendent to come before the committee with a request for information if the superintendent believes it's not within the purview of a school committee member. That's all the policy. And it also codifies the superintendent's wanting of a specific form to request information on. I don't see anything controversial with this whatsoever. So I don't know what my colleagues think about this. This was on the agenda for the last meeting, and it was in the board docs, and it's also on this meeting as well. I'd like to make a motion that we refer to policy subcommittee, the formal objection policy for further review. However, for twelve-seven, I'd like to, in the same motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve through all readings.
On twelve, let's go back to twelve-six, Mr. Dias.
Fine, I'll make a motion to refer to policy subcommittee for discussion.
Second.
Well, I'm not going to support it probably when it comes out of there, but I don't care if you want to send it back to policy subcommittee. Deb, you want to call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
No. Twelve-six-seven, vote to approve the school committee policy access to information.
Motion to pass through all readings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Larvee?
So the first part of the school committee policy has access to information, it reads investigations by the school committee.
No.
So the school committee, it reads, "School committee may make investigations into the affairs of school district and into the conduct and performance of school department's programs and other matters. The school committee may not discipline or any personnel not appointed by the school committee." So I don't know what Mr. Dias means by the school committee may make investigations. We already have the authority to approve investigations, as we all saw tonight, that already falls under our purview. So I'm not sure what you mean by this, Dias, if you could explain quickly.
Sure, I think just codifying that language, what you just said, it's an authority the school committee already has, and just putting it into policy, as you just said, is something that's already there. I didn't think that part of it would be, but I understand your question, but that's my answer, that clarified.
It's just to go to the school policy?
No, no, he's trying to pave it through tonight to pass it.
I think I have a question.
Go ahead.
It has to do with the words. It says, "The school committee may make investigations into the affairs of the school district."
Yeah, that's my issue.
And into the conduct and, so it, the way it's worded, it makes it sound like...
We're doing the investigation.
The school committee will investigate, and I don't understand what that would entail.
Request information. I think that's in itself an investig, just asking for information.
It doesn't read, may I...
If, if I still have the floor, if there is some appetite to look into this further and some of the language, I withdraw my motion to approve it, I'll make a motion to refer to policy subcommittee.
Second.
Want to send it over there? Yeah, we'll send it back. Okay, Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Larvee?
No.
Ms. Pereira?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
No. You're back up, Colin, sorry.
Do you not, is the...
All right, next.
No, no, he's got...
Oh, seven?
I like to...
On twelve-seven?
That was seven.
Sure. Okay, do I still have the floor?
Yeah, you still have the floor, actually, on twelve-seven.
It's got referred back to...
No, we...
Seven did not. We said seven.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request unanimous consent that this item be referred to policy subcommittee.
I'm sorry.
Doesn't, doesn't...
No, they're not, you're not getting unanimous consent, come on. No, and people just voted no, they're not going to vote, change it now.
Um, listen, I, as one member, I just want to implore the committee...
I can make it a motion to approve, and we'll get your vote and go.
Motion to move the question, please.
Do I still have the floor? The motion, it's not recognized, okay. I just want to hear, to the superintendent, is there anything wrong with having a process codified in policy, so there's not the disputes on requesting information? You gotta forget, it's just not the individuals here. We approve policy that is supposed to last for five to ten years down the road. In my opinion, as one member, I think it's the prudent thing to do, is having a policy on requesting information, so it's not up in the air.
I think the difficulty, Mr. Dias, is that, so I ask a question about the first part, investigations by the school committee. What would that look like for the, for the school committee to investigate? You said it would be, you know, like asking for information. Well, asking for information is covered by number two, requests for information. So that signals to me that it's not just about the kinds of emails I already get asking for information.
That was the...
You're looking for, and you're looking for the right, or I don't know, the permission to conduct your own investigations, and I think it's not a function of the committee. That's why I asked the question. But when you clarified, you talked about number two. Do I think that this committee needs, do I need some clarity on what my responsibilities are in terms of responding to requests for information? When I think about the number of requests, the fact that on any single day, I could get five emails from a person and five requests for information in a spreadsheet? Yep, I don't understand. We're going to use it some days, we're not. So in, when I think about, in the spirit of it, do we need something? Yes. I don't think this is it.
Yeah, and to your point to the vice chair, I clarify that. I don't believe any individual school committee member should be making broad inquiries and ever, however, requesting information to make an informed decision on a question or if a policy, or if a subcommittee has an item before them and they're requesting more information to make an informed referral? I fully support that right. I fully support that right, and that was the intent behind it. So when I saw, when I, and I understand the questions from the vice chair and yourself when I clarified that, so I made the motion to refer to policy subcommittee, just so that language should be clarified, and I believe there's some things in there that could be supported by everyone, but it got voted down. I guess I was just confused as to why it was voted down, when it would just make things a lot easier for everyone. I'm not sure.
No, I don't think so. All right, you up then?
I yield.
So we have nothing on that one? But Mr. Corey?
One, Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yep.
So that's your interpretation, Mr. Dias, but I don't interpret it the same way I yield.
Okay. All right. So what are you doing with this? You making a vote to, it's dead. Let's go to the next one.
I think that's it.
Yeah, no, there is. For your information, thirteen. Are we done with that? Thirteen. For your information, we have some retirements, resignations, appointments, and regretfully, there's only one person that passed away. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, may I make, may I make a comment?
Yep, I have a motion and a second, go ahead. And then you, Mr. Dias, thanks.
Am I up?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to congratulate the recent retiree here listed. As I used to, he used to be a work colleague, and he performed his duties with real fidelity throughout the years. He was a great gift to our school department, and his services will be missed. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mr. Dias?
Yeah, just, I think we should get in the habit of having, when we have the unfortunate deaths, we should get in the habit of having one moment of silence for those individuals, so I'd like to do that now. Thank you, and I hope we can do that in the future. That's all I have.
New business?
Excuse me, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a roll call, I'm sorry. Wait, wait, wait. Go ahead.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Anything to come for us, new business. Ms. Pereira?
So I need to, I need to have a discussion about this, because I don't want to lose my gourmet sandwiches. Now, I'm going to preface that sometimes people here like to make a show or exaggerate or whatever. I don't know where the cameras are, but if you can zoom in, I want to make sure we get a good look at my gourmet sandwich. It is a wrap, I have the floor. It is a wrap with wilted lettuce and Caesar dressing. I'll be happy to pass it around. Now, I'm not complaining about the lettuce being wilted, it's been sitting there a while. I'm happy to eat it, because unlike maybe other people, I work a job at eight in the morning. When I'm running in here, I'm literally running. When I sit down and say I'm leaving at ten, it's because I've been having meetings six twelve. What I didn't vote for was an eight thousand dollar raise. I do watch your dollars. Please, please taxpayers, let me keep my gourmet sandwich. With that, I yield.
You're doing that, and you make, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Larvee?
So, Mr. Mayor, I think we've come to the part in this meeting where, two weeks ago, we had a school committee meeting, and we left to go into executive session right about this time, and we were here till about midnight. Sitting in that room in executive session, we are responsible for making some very important decisions in executive session. Decisions that could disrupt the district, could do something great for the district, but hands in hand, they are decisions that directly impact the district. At midnight, where most of us on this stage have been working since seven AM, eight AM, not going home, coming here, having a gourmet sandwich, and having to think and make decisions that directly impact the kids, the staff, and this district. I am nervous about it, again, going into this at nine-thirty, nine-fifteen, nine-thirty. We have a very hefty, hefty executive session tonight, and this is why some of us are very, very upset. It's not because we want to get out of here, it's not because we want to go home, it's because we want to get through business like adults. We, just tonight, we have discussed things five times already, and they still came to this, this, this committee tonight. We have to be better at taking care of business. We have to, Mayor. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion that we end this meeting tonight at ten-thirty PM, regardless of what we get through, and that's it. That's it. I yield.
Second.
A motion and a second on the ten-thirty exit. Any further discussion? Deb, call the roll. Mr. Agia?
Yeah, just...
Bobby had something?
Oh, Bobby had something?
I didn't see Ms. Agia.
I'll let Ms. Agia go first.
I'll defer to you, sir.
So, a few things. For me, I agree with that. I mean, when we're going to work at seven AM and we're being here and making decisions at twelve-thirty at night, I can tell you, you know, half the time, when we're going through things, you know, things could be even misinterpreted, and I'm speaking for myself. One thing I do agree with is we have to get better on this stage. I mean, it's not just whether we're talking about things or not, it's how we're handling things. When I look out in the crowd, and we're supposed to be leading a group of educators, and you got people laughing in the crowd because of our behavior, and I'm sitting here, I'm going to be quite honest, sometimes I'm embarrassed, because we're supposed to be making decisions for the district, and instead of making decisions for the district, we're up here taking shots at each other. And quite honestly, there's times I'm like, I don't want to be a part of that, and I start dreading these meetings, because sometimes we're not getting anything done, so we're taking five hours and we're just talking in circles. So, and I know I'm one committee member, but we needed to get it together. I mean, realistically, we shouldn't have to sit in meetings till twelve-thirty at night, because if we're getting stuff done, and we're being progressive, and we're talking and we're being progressive, and we're talking about things, and we're talking about business, I don't give a damn if we sit here till 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning. When I ran for school committee, I ran because I believed in the district, I believed in helping our kids, I believed in helping our educators. But there's sometimes I come to these meetings and I feel like the only thing we do is clown around. I got a daughter at home. So, and I know some of you got kids, but this time, I don't go to sleep and I gotta go back into work. So it pisses me off, the fact that we come up here and we play games, and I gotta be up at 2:30, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, 5:00 in the morning, and then I gotta go in and do my job that I get paid for, and I'm jeopardizing paying for my household because we decided to sit up here and joke. So that's just my opinion. So whether we get out here at 10:30, I don't give a damn what time we get out of here, as long as we're getting work done. But I'm gonna be completely honest, I'm not gonna keep sitting up here wasting my time, wasting my wife's time, than wasting my daughter's time. Because for me, the only thing I care about is my family first, and I care about these kids and people in this district. But I'm gonna be honest, it is embarrassing when we sit up there and principals and stuff are laughing at us because we're taking shots. That is not why I'm part of this committee, and I'm telling everyone on this stage now, if it continues, I'm gonna resign. I yield.
So, who, Mr. Aga?
Yeah, just, I'd have to disagree with some of the comments. I mean, people do take shots. And I think sometimes it's selective on who gets, you know, oh, we don't yell and this and that. But at the end of the day, we have a job to do, and we have to ask questions, that's part of the job, and that's part of the due diligence for the job. One thing that would improve, and I think it'll improve if we get the information that we requested, and granted, it's a lot of information, I'm not saying it's, it's not, but more of the background of looking into things, how much scrutiny we look at our finances to make sure that we're, we're not having situations where we have egg on our face when we either spent money on things that we shouldn't have done, we have contracts that aren't followed, we have different situations that have, so I think we can do a better job of that as well. But in essence, we meet once per month here as a body, and we have a lot of negotiations that have been taken for a long time. And we, the reason why we have so many is I don't think we scattered them out and planned accordingly. So I think we have to do a better job with our agenda setting, but I think I'm gonna vote against this because there is business to be done. And it might not be done by 10:30 tonight, but I'm gonna vote against it. I yield.
Okay, so we get to vote?
Aye.
Oh, Shelley, you were next, I'm sorry, Shelley.
Okay, I'm gonna be very brief. I do have a problem with being here 2:00 in the morning at any point in time. What I don't have a problem with is scheduling more than one meeting. But what I am not gonna do any longer, I'm already not running, what I will not do any longer is put the school department or the city above my health. And that's what it's come to. So I appreciate the 10:30, but again, I'll be leaving at 10. And maybe we can schedule two meetings or organize them more effectively so we're not discussing things that we could have discussed during budget time or taken time to talk about sandwiches. So I will leave at 10. With that, I yield.
Mr. Dias?
I understand. I, I spent about one minute discussing that. I have the right to my opinion. On the motion itself, we do, and again, I do respect all the comments from my colleagues, and there is a lot we could take in from it. With this executive session today, we do have a large executive session. I don't disagree with my colleague to my right. I believe with the agendas that we receive, I don't think monthly meetings can cut it anymore. I think we should consider having bi-weekly meetings or special meetings to discuss more issues. If not, I don't want to rush, and the reason I'm voting no, I don't want to rush through very important items, items that have to do with the cyber attack in our district and very important matters with there, to lit, to negotiations, to approving minutes, and looking at other matters. That's some things we should not, and putting a 10:30 time limit would make us rush. And I, I'd be worried we wouldn't be taking informed votes or we'd be voting to table more items at 10:30 to be rushed, I mean, to be discussed at a future meeting. I do understand the frustration of my colleagues. However, I believe we should vote no on this motion, so we're not in a predicament to go through these items at, with haste. I yield.
Mr. Corey?
I'll be brief. The, the example of the sandwiches that my colleague raised, it's absolutely ridiculous. But it's, it's part and parcel to the whole line of questions that come down across this school board that have elongated these meetings to ridiculous lengths. In my first term on meetings, we're never this long. All of a sudden, now they're this long, with a litany of questions that sometimes do not need to be asked. So when they say we're asking the questions, a lot of times, those same questions do not need to be asked because they've already been answered. This school board does its due diligence, and it's led by a very strong team, a very strong locally-based team that I honor. And I just wonder if this is a matter of trust. I place my trust in the team that drives the school department because we have some very highly talented administrators. That's where I place my trust. And I can't help but think that the litany of questions is because of an adversarial distrust toward the administration. With that, I yield.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call. Give it a call.
Mr. Aga? Mr. Bailey?
Well, you don't have it anyway.
Mr. Dias?
No.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perrow?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Uh, yes. Request for executive session, number 50. Oh, Bobby, go ahead.
Now, talking about, and just following up with some of the things, although I voted no, I do think it's important if we have, you know, executive sessions as long as we have tonight, it is important to break this into two sessions so we can make sound decisions. I, although I did vote for, vote no for tonight, I do think moving forward, we need to really explore breaking it into two different meetings. Because, let's be real, making these decisions at 12, 12:30 at night after a 7:00 AM day is, is, in my opinion, and like I said, I'm one person, I don't think it's the best decision. With that, I yield.
Can we just get to executive session?
Yes, I, I did have some items I wanted to bring up before I came into the meeting. I mean, so.
These people are waiting all night for a contract vote.
Why am I being interrupted, Mr. Mayor? Why are you rushing me? Why are you rushing me? I don't understand.
I think everybody's voting to move along, but go ahead.
Thank you. So, I'm not even gonna make a vote on this. So there were two policies that I requested. I just want to get confirmation because we had a member of the public reach out for it, on just one of them. So, there's guarantees that there will be a Policy Subcommittee meeting in regard to a headlights policy. Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay.
And I reached out to the parent, and she understands where the confusion was. It is going to be on one of the agendas. That it's one of the next two Policy Subcommittee agenda meetings.
Thank you. And last item, I'd like to make a motion that whatever we don't get to today, we have a special meeting next week.
Have a second?
Sure, second. I'll have to finish it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Aga?
Just, I think we should be careful with, out of respect for everyone's schedules, we shouldn't be dictating when we're gonna have a meeting. Should be courteous to all members to make sure that they can make it at a certain time. I don't think we need to dictate what week we're gonna have a meeting. Because when the majority members can't make it and one can't, we always defer to them to say, no, we're not gonna have that meeting. I don't think we should be putting timelines on what meetings.
Ms. Perrow?
Um, I think next week leaves it pretty open. If it wasn't for the fact that we have contracts we need to, to finish for our employees, then I would agree. But I think if, if next week doesn't happen to work, then we can talk about that. But I think, yeah, let's have Deb reach out, and let's see if we can get this done next week. I don't see why that should be a problem. And if we can't, then we can't. But if we can, we should.
Are you asking me?
No. That wasn't, that wasn't a question.
No, I thought you were looking at me for an answer.
Well, I was looking at you because you were the one that just said we shouldn't wait.
All I said was we shouldn't say it has to be next week.
Right.
If it doesn't work out, but we voted.
So yes, I wasn't asking you a question, but I was looking at you because my response was going back to what you had said. So I do think we should do, make our best effort to get it done next week.
We're gonna get it done tonight. Request for executive session, can I get a motion in a second to go into executive session? Hold on.
I'm sorry. There was a motion made by Mr. Dias and seconded by Ms. Perrow if we don't get through all of executive session tonight to have a special meeting next week.
We gotta do that vote then.
That was a motion. I mean, it was, Mr. Dias withdrawing that after discussion, or are we doing?
I would just like to ask, through the chair, through, to Ms. Cabral, or not even through Ms., just through the chair. Don't, if, let's try and get unanimous consent of the entire committee. Let's try and work around. Mr. Aga brings up a good point. Let's, maybe Ms. Cabral could send out an email, and everyone could give their availability. There's certain charts and forms that can be made that people can give their availability for the next week, and then we can plan a meeting through there. That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Aga?
I don't think we need to over, oversimpl, uh, make a big issue out of this. The current policy is the mayor calls a special meeting, we get, when people can make it as soon as possible, call it a day.
All right, let's go.
I don't know why we even need to have this.
Are you withdrawing your motion?
Just withdraw it, it's easy.
You made the motion.
No, you made the motion.
Ms. Perrow seconded it.
All right, withdrew it. Can I get a request to go into executive session now?
So moved.
Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Isn't Attorney Asad gonna read? No, Attorney Asad's gonna read why.
Oh, well, I thought we were gonna vote for us, but go ahead and read away. Jesus Christ.
National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review and approve the executive session minutes for April 17, 2025, special meeting of the school committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review and approve the executive session minutes for again, April 29, 2025, regular school committee meeting. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint dated. Yeah, I don't think they want to hear me anyhow, but dated May 5, 2025, filed by Colin Dias regarding the April 25, 2025 request to the Florida Superintendent of School Search Committee Chairperson Mimi Larrabee for all open session and executive session minutes in the Florida Public Schools Superintendent of School Search Committee from, from 2024. The complaint alleges that after 10 days, he did not receive any response to his request. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining agreement, including hearing grievances relative to all professional teaching employees of the Florida School System, including coaches, title and teachers, nurses, occupational physical therapists and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Florida Educators Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Florida Educators Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the Florida School System, represented by the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118. As the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the Florida School System, represented by the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety, security employees, Florida School System, represented by the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, Local Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil clerical employees of the Florida School System, represented by the Florida Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining agreement, including hearing grievances relative to all paraprofessionals, employees of the Florida School System, represented by the Florida Federation of Paraprofessionals, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to discuss complaints brought by a school committee, by school committee members, National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to this, and Section 21A7, to discuss pending settlement agreement and/or to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and comply with student records law, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the litigation position of the committee. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A5, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to consider filing a criminal complaint regarding a cybersecurity breach, records breach affecting the Florida Public Schools, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental on the position of the city, school committee, rather. National Law Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including all school principals, 18 in number, all Florida Educational, Florida Government TV cable grant positions, nine in number, all non-union central administration support staff, 13 in number, all administrative assistants, 10 in number, all school-based community support specialists, six in number, all school-based athletic program support positions, all facilities and operations supervisory positions, eight in number, all computer technical and student information management system support positions, 19 in number, all special education support positions, two in number, all early education support positions, two in number, Allison Los, redesign coach, James Sullivan, chief officer of special education compliance, Stacy Gayen, financial manager, Christine Abdo, procurement specialist, Sandra Silva, payroll manager, Melissa St. Pierre, CTE, cooperative education coordinator, Kendra Femental, post-secondary career pathway specialist, administrative intern, William Squires, National Navy Defense Cadet Corp., and Derek Randall, National Navy Defense Cadet Corp. We will reconvene, there may or may not be statements at that time.
Can we take two votes so I can abstain from the open meeting law complaint?
Can we just take two, I'm just asking quickly, could we just take two votes so I can abstain from the open meeting law complaint? Just an extra second.
Just, just call the roll, Deb.
Ms. Dragu?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Abstain.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perrow?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, go into executive session. We're back in session. Anything, Deb, please call the roll. Almost forgot.
Ms. Dragu?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Present.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Perrow, Mayor Coogan?
Here. Anything further to come before the committee?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I can make a motion to approve the executive session meeting for April 17, 2025, special meeting of the school committee?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just have one question. Okay, on the distribution to the public, Attorney Asad, is your opinion that the item has concluded? That the, the purpose of that executive session has concluded?
I have not reviewed that yet, researched it yet.
Okay, fair enough. I yield.
Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragu?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perrow? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Anything further?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, if we can make a motion to review and approve the executive session minutes for April 29, 2025, of a regular school committee meeting?
Second.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragu?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perrow? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Entertainer motion to adjourn?
No.
Wait, we got one more, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, wait, 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 we got one more? Hang on, hang on, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to make a motion to respond to the open meeting law complaint dated on May 5, 2025, filed by a school committee meeting, Mr. Di, a school committee, uh, member.
Member.
Mister Dias, sorry about that, regarding the April 25, 2025 request of the Florida Superintendent of School Search Committee Chairperson Mimi Larrabee for all open sessions and executive session minutes in the Florida Public School Superintendent of School Search Committee from 2024. The complaint alleges that after 10 days, he did not receive any response to his request.
I need a second.
Second.
Discussion. Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Dragu?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Abstain.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Larrabee?
Abstain.
Ms. Perrow? Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Point of inquiry, how many votes were that, was that for yes?
Three.
Three.
I, is, that's okay, okay.
Huh?
I thought if it's under a quorum.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, that's what I'm waiting for.
Second.
Second.
Deb, please call the roll on adjournment?
Ms. Dragu?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Right on.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perrow? Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Adjourn.